The few that have actually gone to clinical trials, what we call Phase Two clinical trials, is probably three, four, maybe even five years away from a product being on the market. The question of what it might cost is really up in the air. The political answer, the true and pragmatic answer is, it needs to cost very little. This needs to be available and accessible to everyone here in Los Angeles, across the U.S., and of course internationally. People need to be able to afford it, to use it.
Absolutely crucial. If that's going to be some years away yet, what are the best, most effective treatments now?
Well, right now, to stay HIV negative, number one is just being smart, protecting yourself, thinking about what you're doing. Condoms, condoms, condoms. People need to use condoms if they're having intercourse. It's that simple. We can talk about abstinence, that's an important part of HIV prevention, but it's only a part. It cannot work by itself. Bottom line is, people need to be educated about how they can become positive, and again, just really be smart about it. We spend a lot of time on community education, trying to dispel the myths that HIV only attacks certain communities. It is a gay disease, it is a straight disease, it's a black disease, it's a Latino disease, it's a women's disease. We need to get it in people's heads that they're all at risk, quite frankly, and need to just be smart about it and protect themselves and their partners.
Well, and you said in council, it's also a totally preventable disease, we could stop it completely. Obviously, education has got to be a big factor in that.
Absolutely. Again, we go around the city and try and host events where we get the general community to talk about HIV more. We still tend to be afraid to talk about the disease. But the bottom line is true. It's a simple fact. It is absolutely preventable. There is no reason any other person becomes HIV positive anywhere in the world. And if we had the political will to do so, if our communities were really educated about it and smart about it, we could stop this disease dead in its tracks.
Well, you mentioned anywhere in the world. I've been to places in Africa which are just incredible hotspots for the spread of the disease. Can you tell us a little bit about the world widespread? How common is it? How many people have been diagnosed? Things like that, if you would.
We're talking about 40 million people. The largest hotspot, as you mentioned, is in Sub-Saharan Africa. The Caribbean has similar numbers and rates. We're seeing huge infection rates in Southeast Asia. Europe and the United States have generally gotten a better handle on it. But we did a study, it was about two or three years ago now, of six major U.S. cities, and it focused particularly on African-American young gay men. And we saw infection rates in some of those cities up to 46 percent, which is as high as any hotspot in Sub-Saharan Africa. So this really is still an international epidemic. While we've slowed infections in the United States, we have maybe 40,000 new infections a year. Again, this is totally preventable, that number should be very close to zero.
And in places in Africa that I've seen, and perhaps you have as well, there are areas set aside that are sort of encampments for children who have been orphaned by the AIDS virus, there are entire generations being wiped out and not there to bring up the next generation.
Yes, I mean HIV and AIDS is definitely an economic issue. It's really a national security issue. You've got generations of educators, workers, teachers, being wiped out in many places of the world. And it's going to have decades and decades of impact. So again, if we have something like microbicides, which can be spread easily, quickly, hopefully inexpensively, across the globe, we can save thousands, again, maybe millions of people from becoming positive over the next decade.
And of course, something we haven't talked about yet, the prison system presenting its own very special set of circumstances. I want to give you a couple of minutes to talk about that, if you would, what could be done in our prisons. By the way, do you have any influence whatsoever on how this is handled in prisons?
I want to start with that second question, I suppose. Legally, the answer is probably no. Do I have any particular influence? The city does not maintain its own jails and prisons. They have either county jails, state prisons, or federal prisons. However, we have a bully pulpit and certainly a political voice in the issue. And there is legislation at the state level, there's legislation at the federal level to do two different things. One is to make sure there is testing available in the prisons. Men, and really women, and we focus mostly on men, that come into the penal system should be tested for HIV when they come in. It should not be absolutely mandatory, but it should be absolutely routine. People can have the right to opt out, but I believe most people would take the test if it was simply offered to them. We need to know if they're positive when they come in, we need to know if they're positive when they leave the system. We have to be honest and discuss things. People argue that people should not be becoming positive in prison because sex is not happening in jail. And it's just not true. It's just not true. So we have to be honest about that, we have to address that issue. We need to not only test people to find out if they're positive and provide medical care if they are in the jail and prison system, but we also need to provide condoms. Again, we know sex is happening, unless you're able to 100% stop it, otherwise, we need to provide that protection. Not only is it important for the people who are incarcerated, but it's also important for the general public. It's also important for our taxpayers. We pay for medical care. People are becoming positive in jail and need that medical care for the rest of their lives, we're going to pay for that most likely. So it's definitely cost-effective to prevent those new infections. From a policy standpoint, it's still pulling teeth. We had some of these bills at the state level last year, and they didn't go anywhere. But I really intend to push it this coming year.
Well, the landscape, as you painted, is certainly very sobering. On the brighter side, tell us about some of the accomplishments of the AIDS Coordinator's Office.
Well, they're usually around drama in the HIV epidemic. The City of Los Angeles' biggest accomplishment, as far as I'm concerned, is founding Needle Exchange here, at least government-funded and organized needle exchange, about 11 years ago. That came on long before my watch, I've only been here three years, but we've strongly supported it over this last few years. Needle Exchange, while controversial, is very clear from a public health standpoint. It stops the spread of HIV in a population that uses injection drugs, or otherwise injects legal medicines, such as people with diabetes who might use injections. Clean needles, we've pulled 1.4 million dirty needles off the streets of Los Angeles in this past year. So putting clean needles out there isn't encouraging drug use, it's getting dirty needles off the street. While people, again, think it's controversial, I don't believe that anyone who wasn't injecting drugs would start injecting because they had the opportunity to have a clean needle. I think that argument, quite frankly, is preposterous. We encourage our providers, and actually mandate our providers, to take action to get their clients into drug treatment, to get them into medical care, to get them into social services, so they stop using drugs. So they clean up their lives, quite frankly. We think this is a great public health intervention and great social service. So the City of L.A. has been at the forefront of that. L.A. County Health Department is just now rolling out their contracts to create a similar program that wraps around our program. Apart from that, we have pushed legislation for several years. Every year, my office puts out a legislative agenda at the federal and state level we need to be supporting, and I think the City of Los Angeles should be at the forefront of the push for better public policy. And our other claim to fame is that many, many years ago, under City Attorney James Hahn, Los Angeles created the world's first AIDS antidiscrimination law. It's really a great claim to fame, because we said you cannot discriminate against people in employment and housing because they're HIV positive, and quite frankly, much of the rest of the world has followed our example.
Well, I think probably the biggest headline from everything you've had to say is education is crucial. How, if somebody would like to get some of the information that you've been talking about, or get in touch with your office, how would they go about doing that?
Certainly. They can give us a call at (213) 485-6320. Or more importantly, I hope people can get to my website. It's www.lacidAIDS.org. On that website, they're going to see a banner that demonstrates our latest HIV testing initiative. The real bottom line and most important item right now we have to fight the epidemic is to educate people, but make sure people know their HIV status. If you don't know your status, you're more likely to be out there spreading the virus. We plan on launching, over the next six months, a three-year pilot program to test up to a million people in Los Angeles. Currently, we test about 60,000 people across the county in public and private medical care. That number needs to grow up dramatically. You'll see our rationale for wanting to do that kind of testing on the website, you'll see our social marketing campaign. Again, we target communities that need to be thinking about this strongly in their communities. We say HIV is a black disease. The African-American community is most disproportionately impacted, they need to take action to address that. We say HIV is a Latino disease. Those billboards are up in the city. The Latino community is going to have the largest numbers of people who are HIV positive over the next couple of years. We also say HIV is an Asian disease. Asian community has very small numbers right now in terms of who's impacted, but those numbers are growing and the community is not talking about it and addressing it enough. We also say HIV is a women's disease. Women made up 5% of the epidemic a decade ago, now make up 13% here in Los Angeles. It's more than 150% increase. We have to do something about it. So the City of Los Angeles plans on taking a leadership role, and hey, we're doing it.
Well said. Stephen, David, Simon, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you for having me.
The Los Angeles City Council voted unanimously to support legislation for research and development of microbicides to be used for HIV/AIDS prevention. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meeting and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at[628.32][628.32](213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 23rd, 2007. On behalf of Roberto Campos and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Across this great city, men and women from every background and occupation are coming together, volunteering to help the citizens of Los Angeles. They are the poll workers. They assist voters on Election Day by distributing ballots, answering questions, and opening and closing the polls. They do it not for the $105 stipend, no! But to help others. Become a part of this elite team, the Poll Worker, the next American hero.
You with the stupid hat! Come here, closer! No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally! And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called!
Hey, look out for the pothole!
Welcome to Council Week in Review. I'm Jack Popejoy. City Council of Los Angeles normally consists of fifteen members selected from various districts across the city, but because of a vacancy in Council District Seven, there are currently only fourteen council members serving the city of Los Angeles until the May election, when the District Seven seat will be filled. Now, the council convenes three times each week: Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at ten AM. All of these meetings are open to the public. On Wednesday, your Los Angeles City Council, in a vote of ten to three, gave final approval to a living wage ordinance that will apply to hotel employees working near LAX. The measure passed without debate. However, the meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-first, was canceled because a number of council members traveled to Sacramento to persuade the California Transportation Commission to restore funding for a carpool lane on the 405 freeway between the ten and the 101. And joining us now by phone is Los Angeles City Council President Eric Garcetti. Mr. President, this is also becoming a weekly update call. Thanks for taking the time to join us again.
Great pleasure to be back.
Now, council meetings are rarely canceled, but the 405 carpool lane is obviously so important, not only to you, but to so many Angelitos. How did the state come to a decision not to go forward with this project?
Well, I think it was an oversight, and it was very important that we were there. Los Angeles voted overwhelmingly, not just for the transportation-infrastructure bond, but for the housing, and the water, and the other, the school bonds that were so important to our state's and our city's future. We overwhelmingly voted for it. We provided more than a quarter of all the votes in the state, and we were guaranteed by policymakers that we would not only get our fair share, but more than the twenty-eight percent of our population. We have thirty-three percent of the gridlock in the state, and we figured it was time to get up there, remind folks of Los Angeles, and all of the policymakers we met with seemed to agree with us and thought that it was a bureaucratic oversight.
Well, I'm among the hundreds of thousands of people who can vouch for the fact that the 101 and 405 interchange is probably the busiest in the nation. Wouldn't the widening of that freeway go a long way to improve traffic flow, for example, clear through the west side into the valley?
Unquestionably. And if you recall, the press conference that was held in Los Angeles before the elections by Governor Schwarzenegger and other leaders was overlooking the 405, with the implication that the gridlock that we faced there, the 101 is the most crowded freeway in the country in terms of numbers of cars, the 405 is the most congested in terms of the amount of traffic. So where those two meet, and then where the 405 continues, the implication was, vote for this bond, and you'll see improvements. We want to make sure that they live up to that promise, live up to that implication. And the governor himself told the mayor, and shared with our staff as well, that he believes that it was an oversight and something which he knows that we did a lot of work to get ready for 2009, and unlike the bureaucracy up there that said we weren't ready, those funds should and must come to Los Angeles.
What other projects might be in jeopardy? And by the way, what projects got the green light?
Well, we don't have any official green light yet. We went up there to testify, and there will be a later vote on it. But we have not only the 405 carpool lane and widening, we're looking at the five freeway between the 170 and the 134 to add a carpool lane to continue the one that exists. We're looking at some of the transit dollars. And we also impressed upon Sacramento that Los Angeles is a self-help city. We have put forward dollars for clean water, for transportation and transit, for housing. And so when they're looking at how we spend, you know, Prop 1A, B, C, D, and E, they should look for those cities that are already stepping up and paying for part of it themselves. It means projects can move forward, whether it's the Hollywood Cap Freeway Park that we've talked about, over the 101 freeway, where we can have a great Central Park built literally above the 101 freeway, or whether it's making sure that we can continue the momentum with housing. While I was up there, I got agreement from Daryl Steinberg, the senator who oversees park policy, to write language into the implementing legislation for Proposition 84, the park bond, to allow those sorts of parks to be included. So it positions us well to be able to continually apply for these funds for the years to come and make sure this oversight is corrected.
I guess representing the city in Sacramento was you, the mayor, council member Grul, I believe. Who else did you folks talk to?
Well, we also had council members Cardenas, Smith, and Reyes. And it was great to have former legislators like Councilmember Cardenas up there, and we also had County Supervisor Gloria Molina. We met as well with Ted Liu, who is a state senator from our area, Kevin DeLeon, who's the new Assistant Majority Leader, and represents the area near the Los Angeles River. So we spoke a lot about Taylor Yard and Chinatown Yards, the cornfields. We met with Senator Alan Lowenthal to discuss port security and infrastructure. And we met with our own City Council alum, Alex Padilla, our former president and now state senator.
I'd be the worst journalist in the world if I didn't ask you. So what did you come away with? Did you get agreement? Did you get commitments? What?
We got commitments to change the, or to include language in the implementing legislation to help Los Angeles build the parks we need to build. We got commitments on helping us acquire more land around Taylor Yard alongside the Los Angeles River. We got commitments that all of the policymakers, from Mike Fuer, who heads up the committee overseeing transportation, that nothing will move until that 405 project is approved. So those commitments were really important. And the language commitments in the implementing legislation, because as they say, the devil's in the details, we made sure the details are going to give Los Angeles our fair share. So it was an extremely successful trip, and we should see hundreds of millions of dollars come to Los Angeles that others were going to sweep away.
And finally, I guess I should ask you the question of presuming that the money is in the pipeline, when will it actually get started?
We will get money this coming year. The commission already recommended that. But we want to make sure that much more than the eleven percent overall that they gave us, we get that number up into the twenties in terms of a percentage. So we will see money come out this year, and these bonds are multi-year bonds. So for probably the next five years or so, we'll have a host of housing, transportation, and parks improvements.
Very good. District thirteen council member and council president Eric Garcetti, thanks again for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks a lot. Great to be back.
A report from the Energy and Environment Committee concerning Prop O clean water bonds finds District One Councilmember Ed Reyes asking staff if we're using the dollars that we have to attract even more dollars from the state.
The city of LA is putting their money where their mouth is. Our own funds are being used to deal with these statewide issues. This is a regional issue. In our Prop O strategic moves and how we're funding, are we using our dollars to the extent that we can so that we can attract more dollars from the state, given how much is being spent for each project? And could we be using more of these dollars for the river developments throughout the city? So if you can answer those two questions, I appreciate that very much. Please hold my time.
Good morning, Sharm Karagony, Bureau of Sanitation. Councilmember, the answer is yes. Obviously, all the grants that you're referring to do require matching fund, and Proposition O would be a good source for our matching fund to go and maximize the likelihood of receiving, you know, extra money from other sources. In fact, from Proposition Fifty, Chapter Eight, as you know, we have received ten million dollars because we had matching fund from Prop O, and we have also received money from Consolidated Grant, Prop Forty, and other three, four million dollars.
A simple question from District Six Councilmember Tony Cardenas about Prop O funding. How will it help in the neighborhoods?
What is the basis or basic number-one issue, the reason why Prop O came into existence? To do what? My time, please.
In my understanding, was what I called, Councilmember.
Sorry.
To comply with the Stonewater mandates, TMDLs.
Can you paint a picture for the people of Los Angeles, one simple example of something that might be in their neighborhood that this would actually help with?
Yes. For instance, you know, in the neighborhood, when people put trash on the streets, and when it drains and goes to the Los Angeles River, we have a mandate to reduce that trash by ten percent per year to zero in ten years, which is 2014. And with the three-pronged approach that I mentioned earlier, outreach, use of technology, and enforcement, we are meeting those mandates.
Mentioning Reggie the Alligator, Councilmember Janice Hahn talks about two Prop O projects that are located in her District Fifteen.
Well, I am very happy today, and I think the residents of Los Angeles, the voters who approve Prop O should also be happy today. But I'm really happy, colleagues, because for me today, what is before us is over five years of work, just in my office, to bring much-needed resources to several areas of the district. And before I was elected in 2001, I knew of the terrible condition at Lake Machado at the Harbor Regional Park. And I learned about the poor condition of the water, the toxic levels which were killing wildlife, the pollution which came from the Wilmington drain into Lake Machado. And then, of course, everyone learned about Lake Machado when we had a very famous resident briefly, our alligator Reggie. And we don't really know what happened to Reggie. Some people think maybe his demise came as a result of this toxic polluted body of water which he resided in. And the other thing that was frustrating for me, colleagues, is that I learned about reports that have been written, studies that have been studied, advisory groups that have been put together to say what needed to happen at Lake Machado, and still nothing ever happened. And then along came Prop O, and it was the great leadership of this council, Councilwoman Perry, Councilman Garcetti, many of us, who really pushed Prop O to the voters. And I used Lake Machado and Cabrillo Beach as poster children for the passage of Prop O. And I think that's a lot of the reason that we got a strong vote for that, is because people knew of the polluted conditions of our water.
Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. If there's no objection, we'll send those forth with. Thank you all very much.
District Eight Councilmember Bernard Parks invites Stephen David Simon, the city's AIDS coordinator, to the center table to give a brief overview of the latest AIDS research being done.
As we approach forty million people worldwide living with HIV and AIDS, I'm glad to see this microbicide resolution before you today by Councilmembers Parks and Rosendahl. We concur with the CLA analysis and the Intergovernmental Relations Committee's support of these federal bills. The bills would amend the Public Health Services Act to facilitate research and development of microbicides, and require coordination among federal agencies to do so. They were initially introduced in 2005 by Representative Shays and Senator Corzine. Senator Corzine has left of the Senate, but Representative Shays's office says they plan to reintroduce in 110th Congress. Microbicides, what are they? They have the potential to be the greatest protection against HIV and AIDS developed so far. Their development and widespread availability could have an incredible effect on the city's efforts to fight the epidemic. Microbicides are gels or creams that a person can apply to openings in their own body to at least significantly reduce the transmission of HIV and other sexually transmitted diseases. Currently, sixty to eighty products are in the pipeline, but only five have made it to large-scale Phase Two trials. It's feasible that one could be licensed by the end of the decade. Microbicides are particularly important for slowing infection rates among women. Globally, women, mostly women of color, make up half the HIV epidemic. In Los Angeles, women only make up thirteen percent of the epidemic, but a decade ago, women were five percent of the epidemic. That's a hundred and fifty percent increase, and most of that increase was among women of color. With microbicides, women do not have to solely depend upon their male partner using a condom. And quite frankly, the same is also true for many men. And microbicides are the only medical protection against HIV that allows for conception. So people trying to conceive a child, or who have personal beliefs against contraception, could still protect themselves from HIV. We, the City AIDS Coordinator's Office, have dedicated our last, two of our last three World AIDS Day conferences to microbicides, including our 2006 partnership with researchers at UCLA, who are already on the cutting edge of this development. By supporting these bills, you will help speed their passage, and by speeding their passage, help speed the development of microbicides.
Seeing AIDS is a purely preventable disease, and we must do what we can, Janice Hahn talks about microbicides empowering women.
One was, we can actually stop HIV/AIDS in its tracks. It is a purely preventable disease. I think that is really a statement that we really should all hang on to, and then do what we can to prevent it and to stop it. And the other thing that is interesting to me about the microbicides that I think is important is that it empowers women. This is a discovery, a revelation, that can empower women. And as you said, so many women are becoming infected because of their male partners, either who haven't protected themselves or they're unaware that they've been engaged in other activity that could put them at risk. So, you know, anything that we can do that takes a woman's life and puts it back in her own hands, and she does not have to be at the mercy of a man in her life, I think is important. And I think that's, this discovery, I think, will really help do that. And everything we can do to empower women, and again, get them to take care of their own health in the way that they can, particularly, it's interesting that this could be used so that a woman could still conceive without putting her health at risk. And that's a choice that women shouldn't have to make, whether to put their health at risk or to conceive. And so I think this does that. So I think it's important that we, as Los Angeles, get behind this legislation and support it and do everything we can.
And joining us now is the city of Los Angeles AIDS Coordinator, Stephen David Simon. Mr. Simon, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack. Always a pleasure to be here.
Right off the top, tell us a little bit about what the office is responsible for. And by the way, how long has it been in existence?
Well, the AIDS Coordinator's Office was created by Mayor Bradley in the late eighties. We were originally in the mayor's office and moved to the Community Development Department, and are now situated in the Department on Disability. It's easiest to say what we don't do. We're the city of Los Angeles, not the county. The county does public health. The county does care and treatment for HIV and AIDS. We sort of do everything else. We do HIV prevention, we do education and awareness and public policy on the state and federal level.
And of course, we saw you in council talking about a new technology in the fight against AIDS, microbicides. What are they, and why do you believe they're going to be important to AIDS prevention?
Well, microbicides are probably the most important scientific breakthrough in HIV, apart from actually the drugs that are the care and treatment for people who are positive. Microbicides are a gel, or a cream, or an ointment that a person can use on themselves, put on or actually in themselves, to protect themselves from HIV. They won't replace condoms, but again, they could keep thousands, if not millions, of people from becoming HIV-positive.
When do you suppose they might be available? And by the way, would the treatment be expensive?
Well, there are sixty to eighty products in the pipeline now, but only a few that have actually gone to clinical trials, what we call Phase Two clinical trials. It's probably three, four, maybe even five years away from a product being on the market. The question of what it might cost is really up in the air. The political answer, the true and pragmatic answer is, it needs to cost very little. This needs to be available and accessible to everyone here in Los Angeles, across the US, and of course, internationally. People need to be able to afford it, to use it.
Absolutely crucial. If that's going to be some years away yet, what are the best, most effective treatments now?
Well, right now, to stay HIV-negative, number one is just being smart, protecting yourself, thinking about what you're doing. Condoms, condoms, condoms. People need to use condoms if they're having intercourse. It's that simple. We can talk about abstinence. That's an important part of HIV prevention, but it's only a part. It cannot work by itself. The bottom line is, people need to be educated about how they can become positive, and again, just really be smart about it. We spend a lot of time on community education, trying to dispel the myths that HIV only attacks certain communities. It is a gay disease, it is a straight disease, it's a black disease, it's a Latino disease, it's a women's disease. We need to get it in people's heads that they're all at risk, quite frankly, and need to just be smart about it and protect themselves and their partners.
Well, and you said in council, it's also a totally preventable disease. We could stop it completely. Obviously, education has got to be a big factor in that.
Absolutely. Again, we go around the city and try and host events where we get the general community to talk about HIV more. We still tend to be afraid to talk about the disease. But the bottom line is true. It's a simple fact. It is absolutely preventable. There is no reason any other person becomes HIV-positive anywhere in the world. And if we had the political will to do so, if our communities were really educated about it and smart about it, we could stop this disease dead in its tracks.
Well, you mentioned anywhere in the world. I've been to places in Africa which are just incredible hotspots for the spread of the disease. Can you tell us a little bit about the world widespread? How common is it? How many people have been diagnosed? Things like that, if you would.
We're talking about forty million people. The largest hotspot, as you mentioned, is in Sub-Saharan Africa. The Caribbean has similar numbers and rates. We're seeing huge infection rates in Southeast Asia. Europe and the United States have generally gotten a better handle on it. But we did a study, it was about two or three years ago now, of six major US cities, and it focused particularly on African-American young gay men. And we saw infection rates in some of those cities up to forty-six percent, which is as high as any hotspot in Sub-Saharan Africa. So this really is still an international epidemic. While we've slowed infections in the United States, we have maybe forty thousand new infections a year. Again, this is totally preventable. That number should be very close to zero.
And in places in Africa that I've seen, and perhaps you have as well, there are areas set aside that are sort of encampments for children who have been orphaned by the AIDS virus. There are entire generations being wiped out, and not there to bring up the next generation.
Yes. I mean, HIV and AIDS is definitely an economic issue. It's really a national security issue. You've got generations of educators, workers, teachers, being wiped out in many places of the world. And it's going to have decades and decades of impact. So again, if we have something like microbicides, which can be spread easily, quickly, hopefully inexpensively, across the globe, we can save thousands, again, maybe millions of people from becoming positive over the next decade.
And of course, something we haven't talked about yet, the prison system presenting its own very special set of circumstances. I want to give you a couple of minutes to talk about that, if you would, what could be done in our prisons. By the way, do you have any influence whatsoever on how this is handled in prisons?
I want to start with that second question, I suppose. Legally, the answer is probably no. Do I have any particular influence? The city does not maintain its own jails and prisons, there are county jails, state prisons, or federal prisons. However, we have a bully pulpit, and certainly a political voice in the issue. And there is legislation at the state level, there's legislation at the federal level, to do two different things. One is to make sure there is testing available in the prisons. Men, and really women, and we focus mostly on men, that come into the penal system should be tested for HIV when they come in. It should not be absolutely mandatory, but it should be absolutely routine. People can have the right to opt out, but I believe most people would take the test if it was simply offered to them. We need to know if they're positive when they come in, we need to know if they're positive when they leave the system. We have to be honest and discuss things. People argue that people should not be becoming positive in prison because sex is not happening in jail. And it's just not true. It's just not true. So we have to be honest about that. We have to address that issue. We need to not only test people to find out if they're positive and provide medical care if they are in the jail and prison system, but we also need to provide condoms. Again, we know sex is happening, unless you're able to a hundred percent stop it, otherwise, we need to provide that protection. Not only is it important for the people who are incarcerated, but it's also important for the general public. It's also important for our taxpayers. We pay for medical care. People are becoming positive in jail and need that medical care for the rest of their lives. We're going to pay for that, most likely. So it's definitely cost-effective to prevent those new infections. From a policy standpoint, it's still pulling teeth. We had some of these bills at the state level last year, and they didn't go anywhere. But I really intend to push it this coming year.
Well, the landscape, as you painted, is certainly very sobering. On the brighter side, tell us about some of the accomplishments of the AIDS Coordinator's Office.
Well, they're usually around drama and the HIV epidemic. The city of Los Angeles' biggest accomplishment, as far as I'm concerned, is founding Needle Exchange here, at least government-funded and organized needle exchange, about eleven years ago. That came on long before my watch. I've only been here three years, but we've strongly supported it over this last few years. Needle Exchange, while controversial, is very clear from a public health standpoint. It stops the spread of HIV in a population that uses injection drugs, or otherwise injects legal medicines, such as people with diabetes who might use injections. Clean needles, we've pulled 1.4 million dirty needles off the streets of Los Angeles in this past year. So putting clean needles out there isn't encouraging drug use, it's getting dirty needles off the street. While people, again, think it's controversial, I don't believe that anyone who wasn't injecting drugs would start injecting because they had the opportunity to have a clean needle. I think that argument, quite frankly, is preposterous. We encourage our providers, and actually mandate our providers, to take action to get their clients into drug treatment, to get them into medical care, to get them into social services, so they stop using drugs. So they clean up their lives, quite frankly. We think this is a great public health intervention and great social service. So the city of LA has been at the forefront of that. LA County Health Department is just now rolling out their contracts to create a similar program that wraps around our program. Apart from that, we have pushed legislation for several years. Every year, my office puts out a legislative agenda at the federal and state level we need to be supporting, and I think the city of Los Angeles should be at the forefront of the push for better public policy. And our other claim to fame is that many, many years ago, under city attorney James Hahn, Los Angeles created the world's first AIDS antidiscrimination law. It's really a great claim to fame, because we said you cannot discriminate against people in employment and housing because they're HIV-positive, and quite frankly, much of the rest of the world has followed our example.
Well, I think probably the biggest headline from everything you've had to say is education is crucial. How, if somebody...
if it was simply offered to them. We need to know if they're positive when they come in, we need to know if they're positive when they leave the system. We have to be honest and discuss things. People argue that people should not be becoming positive in prison because sex is not happening in jail. And it's just not true. It's just not true. So we have to be honest about that, we have to address that issue. We need to not only test people to find out if they're positive and provide medical care if they are in the jail and prison system, but we also need to provide condoms. Again, we know sex is happening, unless you're able to 100% stop it, otherwise, we need to provide that protection. Not only is it important for the people who are incarcerated, but it's also important for the general public. It's also important for our taxpayers. We pay for medical care. People are becoming positive in jail and need that medical care for the rest of their lives, we're going to pay for that most likely. So it's definitely cost-effective to prevent those new infections. From a policy standpoint, it's still pulling teeth. We had some of these bills at the state level last year, and they didn't go anywhere, but I really intend to push it this coming year.
Well, the landscape, as you painted, is certainly very sobering. On the brighter side, tell us about some of the accomplishments of the AIDS Coordinator's Office.
Well, they're usually around drama in the HIV epidemic. The City of Los Angeles' biggest accomplishment, as far as I'm concerned, is founding needle exchange here, at least government-funded and organized needle exchange, about 11 years ago. That came on long before my watch, I've only been here three years, but we've strongly supported it over this last few years. Needle exchange, while controversial, is very clear from a public health standpoint. It stops the spread of HIV in a population that uses injection drugs, or otherwise injects legal medicines, such as people with diabetes who might use injections. Clean needles, we've pulled 1.4 million dirty needles off the streets of Los Angeles in this past year. So putting clean needles out there isn't encouraging drug use, it's getting dirty needles off the street. While people, again, think it's controversial, I don't believe that anyone who wasn't injecting drugs would start injecting because they had the opportunity to have a clean needle. I think that argument, quite frankly, is preposterous. We encourage our providers, and actually mandate our providers, to take action to get their clients into drug treatment, to get them into medical care, to get them into social services, so they stop using drugs. So they clean up their lives, quite frankly. We think this is a great public health intervention and great social service. So the City of L.A. has been at the forefront of that. L.A. County Health Department is just now rolling out their contracts to create a similar program that wraps around our program. Apart from that, we have pushed legislation for several years. Every year, my office puts out a legislative agenda at the federal and state level we need to be supporting, and I think the City of Los Angeles should be at the forefront of the push for better public policy. And our other claim to fame is that many, many years ago, under City Attorney James Hahn, Los Angeles created the world's first AIDS antidiscrimination law. It's really a great claim to fame, because we said you cannot discriminate against people in employment and housing because they're HIV positive, and quite frankly, much of the rest of the world has followed our example.
Well, I think probably the biggest headline from everything you've had to say is "Education is crucial." How, if somebody...
You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning. Today is Friday, March 2nd. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We're here in Van Nuys City Hall, the first Friday of the month. If you're unable to be here, you can watch us on Channel 35, as well as going to our website, and we encourage that participation. Today, we have two presentations, special presentations. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Cardenas for our first presentation.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good morning, thank you very much. I'd like the representatives of the Posse Foundation to please come forward. That sounds kind of interesting, but you're going to find out why it's called the Posse Foundation. The Posse Foundation began in 1989 because one student who said, and I'll quote, "I never would have dropped out of college if I had my posse with me." And that's what began the Posse Foundation, a support system that goes like this. In its 17-year history, a total of 1,500 Posse scholars have received over $142 million in full tuition. Merit leadership scholarships from top-tier colleges and universities throughout the country. Nationally, the Posse scholars achieve a 90% persistence and graduation rate. In 2006, the Posse Los Angeles received over 800 nominations from Los Angeles-area high schools and community colleges and organizations for the Posse Scholarship, and 43 scholars were awarded full-tuition merit leadership-based scholarships, in December totaling over $4 million. And to date, 192 Los Angeles high school seniors' Posse scholarships have been awarded for over $19 million in just four years. I had the honor of speaking at the Posse Foundation's last year's award ceremony in December. It was a very moving experience to see the families and the young people as they spoke about how their dreams are going to come true, and about how some of them, as a family and as individuals, never believed that they would have this opportunity to live their dream of going to college. And I urge all of my colleagues and the rest of the city to become involved with the amazing organization. I myself am looking forward to two of the Posse recipients, the scholars, to work in my office this summer, and that's part of the coordinated effort that the Posse's career program has. So the Posse Foundation is about giving these young people this unprecedented amount of money so that they can go to college and finish up their dream of attaining their degree. Yet at the same time, it's very involved, they counsel them, they stay in touch with them, they network with them, and that's why it's called the Posse Foundation. They are now their crew, they are now their group, they are now their friends, they are their supporters, and they are there for them, and that's why they have a success rate of over 90%. That means for every 10 young people that goes to college under this program, nine out of 10 attain their degree. That is unprecedented. There are very few organizations that have mastered the ability to help our young people as they have. And with that, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Maya Ramos, and after that, we'll hear from some of the Posse scholars. Maya? And photographer.
Yeah. We just wanted to thank you, Councilman Cardenas, for your continued support of the Posse Foundation and for sponsoring the event. And we wanted to give the opportunity for three of the scholars living in your district to thank you personally. So we'll start with David Barantos.
Another important thing that Posse has done for us is, they haven't just given us friends. But growing up, my dad always told me, "Friends come and go, but family will always be there." And what Posse has given us, they've given us a family to go through our hardships together. And that's what makes Posse so great.
Say your name, what school you go to.
My name is Juan Carlos Flores, and I go to James Fernando High School. I'd just like to thank you, City Councilman Cardenas, first of all, for inviting us Posse scholars here today, but most importantly, for participating in the Posse Foundation's progress and process. Without you and your staff, we would not be able to spread community awareness about what the Posse Foundation does, and we wouldn't be able to continue our mission in Los Angeles to ensure that the Posse Foundation could award more leadership scholarships, partner itself with more colleges and universities, and set up more offices. So on behalf of the Los Angeles Dickinson College Posse Three, I'd like to thank you.
Your name and what school?
My name is Luis Esparza, and I go to San Fernando High School. And today, I would just like to thank you, Tony Cardenas, for inviting us here today and acknowledging our achievement through the Posse Foundation, and it's a great honor to be here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So with that, I'd like to give this resolution on behalf of the City Council of Los Angeles... of Los Angeles, to the Posse Foundation, not only to the people who work there and provide these dreams for these young people, but this is to be given and to be honored by all of the students, past and present and future, who have been part of the Posse Foundation. And once again, I encourage you, colleagues, to please find out more about this foundation, help our schools, help them network so that they can get more applications, so they can have the best and the brightest receive their scholarships. Remember, these are full-ride scholarships. Just this year alone, they gave out $4 million in commitments to these young people. Let's give them a hand. He's a little slow. One more. Thank you very much.
Good luck in your campaign.
Thank you. We also have one for David Barrientos. Juan Carlos Flores. Luis Esparza.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Wesson for a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President and members, and thank you, Melrose, for that rousing round of applause you gave me today. In fact, I think if you take Toby in front, could he be seen up here on the camera? Or let's get...
See, they did have a wide shot earlier of, kind of, from the left side.
Move Toby over a little. Anyway, trust me, whoever's watching, there is a dog here. You may not see him, but he is here.
Why don't we try to go in front of Mr. ...
Mr. Labange is going to help us try to...
Try to come in front of Mr. Wesson in the front of the podium there, and maybe we can see the dog then. The camera shot, if we could ask Channel 35 to pull...
Channel 35, so we can show Toby, so we can find Toby a home. No, you hold him, he's strong. Anyway, today, we have a two-year-old male, York... What is that, Stratfordshire mix?
There you go, we can see him.
You got... We have him? Yeah, look at Toby, he's really playful. He's two years old. His owners moved, so they brought him to the shelter. He has all of his shots. He's been neutered, micro-tripped. We got him from the East Valley facility. Anybody that's interested in taking Toby home, who, again, the owners were really saddened that they had to leave him, but they were moving, please call 888-4LA-PET-1. Now, we have a 100% adoption record in the city of Los Angeles. We do not want to break that record. So, anybody that wants a companion animal that will be with you, good days and bad, please find a home for Toby. Thank you very much. Again, interested, please call 888-4LA-PET-1. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weis, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in the form, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
The first item on the agenda, Madam President, item number one, is an item notice for public hearing. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 12. A motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Yes, Mr. Smith, are we going to... On item number one, grant the... We need a motion on that item?
Either to grant or deny.
To grant or deny.
There were no recommendations. A finding needs to be made. It's a public convenience or necessity in Council District 12.
That's what I said.
Granted, okay, move approval. Okay, Madam Clerk, open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 6.
Any special colleagues on items 2 through 6? Not? Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on several of the items.
Yes, I think we do have items, cards on 7, 17, 32, and 35.
And I believe that there's a card just being turned in on 14 also.
Correct. Okay. Colleagues, yes, Mr. Labange.
Number 29 and number 33 for Ms. Han.
Call special, okay? Thank you. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll on the remainder of those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved.
And Madam President, on the ordinances, items 8 through 16, with the exception of 14, those orders are over to March 16th.
They'll be held over to March 16th, thank you, because we don't anticipate 12 today, so...
No.
Next item.
Madam President, you do have a Commissioner, item number 7. Do we should take that Commissioner up, confirmation before public comment?
Please.
Okay, that's confirmation of Mr. Richard Corona to the North Valley APC and its communication from the Vice Chair of Plum.
Okay, Mr. Corona, is Mr. Corona here? Hi, Mr. Corona. We do have a public comment card on that item, so I'd like to ask Zuma Dogg, Zuma Dogg on item number 7.
Yes, thank you. Hello, check, 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 check. Thank you, City Council, for joining me in my private chambers. I spend the other 29 days of the month here by myself. Item number 7, Planning and Land Use Committee, there's going to be a mayor's appointment, Richard Corona. Is Richard here? My questions will be for the planning and land use. It's the most important department next to budget in the city. My question is, high-density projects. I'd like to know where the chair will be standing on the approval of high-density projects to the city, because we have no infrastructure for the high density. The city's basically maxed out for the streets, the traffic, trash collection, waste, the schools, the police. It'd be nice to be able to continue to build high-density projects and keep, you know, double-decorating and, you know, build 40 stories and put all the people here that are moving to town, but then the externalities, the side streets can't handle it, and all these other things, the trash, the waste, the schools, the police, the water, by the way, water. So, I'd like to know where this appointee will be standing on approval of these high-density projects. I hope that anybody in this position will be very sensitive to the approval of any high-density projects that are not along, you know, mass transit. There's a room for a little bit of development in certain areas, I'll give you that, but there's way too much development happening just for development's sake, because there's money to be made in construction. So, I want to make sure that we can distinguish between the friendly and unfriendly constructions, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corona, would you like to come to the front there?
Sorry, bro.
You may actually sit at the table with us. Welcome. And I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weiss, the... Are you the Vice Chair, Ms. Weiss? Okay.
The Vice Chair of the Planning Committee is a close, personal friend of mine, as is the Chair. But I sit on a planning committee, and we're just delighted that you're going to be serving the city. You're taking on an assignment that, I guarantee you, will cost you more hours than you have previously been told, but it's too late to back out now. And we really appreciate the fact that you're going to be doing this public service, and we look forward to working with you. Good luck to you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Richard, nice to see you, and pleased with your appointment. Would you like to add anything before we take a vote?
Well, no.
I'm sorry, okay, we do...
Other than to respond to the young man that was up at the podium, I think each project has to be taken on its merit individually, with all the items that he mentioned taken into consideration. I think you have to be sensitive to the community and the people within that community. So, all those, I hope to evaluate and base it on the merit and what it does to the environment and that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We do have a couple of the councilmembers now who have pushed their button. I'll acknowledge Mr. Reyes, who is Chair of the committee.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Mr. Corona for his contribution to our city, his hard work. I just wanted to ask one very general question. In your role as Commissioner, what goals would you set for yourself as a Commissioner and your focus on housing and how we would address that issue that is affecting the whole city?
Particularly, specifically in the North Valley, we still have a lot of open space in that area. We also have a community that's aging, so I think we have to take all aspects of the community into consideration. We most certainly want to avoid gridlock and any stress that are put on our infrastructure out in the North Valley. There still is a lot of open space, I think, that we should try and maintain, so...
Mr. Corona, I just want to, again, thank you for your contribution and the hours. These are very critical issues, and these are individual properties, so the due diligence that we do take is much appreciated, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Zine.
Thank you. And Mr. Corona, glad to have you here today. Mr. Corona is a resident of the 12th District, and we had a great discussion. It came in, we talked about the pressures that we have on us to create housing, but also preserve neighborhoods, to preserve our open space, and be cognizant of the environment. I found Mr. Corona very engaging and really understood the history of the valley, having been a resident here a very long time, but also understood the pressures that he's going to face as a zoning Commissioner, and those pressures to build and not build, to preserve and protect at the same time, create. It's an ongoing tension that that commission, more than any other commission, has to deal with. And I just want to say, Mr. Corona, I was very impressed with your meeting, your understanding of what the job you're taking on is, and like Mr. Reyes, I say, you know, I hope you understand after about a year or two that you really did do the right thing, because it's a very, very time-consuming commission, and it puts a lot of demands on you. But I did meet with him, and I found him very engaging, very, very well-qualified, and I would be proud to have you, and thank you for your willingness to serve, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President, and it was a pleasure to hear my colleague speak so well of you. I don't know you at all, but my big issue, frankly, is how do we preserve affordable housing and how do we create more affordable housing? That's the big gap that seems to be getting larger and larger. In my district, which isn't your concern right now, half the people are renters, and the condo conversion strategy is throwing them out of my district, because there isn't affordable rental units anymore in the West Side District near the ocean. So, how would you see your leadership help us get more affordable housing for our people in the city?
Well, I think any new projects that come into the area most certainly have to take into consideration those individuals with the least amount of resource that we can incorporate, and you have to take each project, again, on its merit, and possibly establish, you know, other avenues that these individuals can take, the individuals that don't have the resource, so...
Because one of the challenges is, of course, to build it on-site, you know? A lot of developers want to build the affordable components somewhere else and say it doesn't pencil in for their on-site. I usually say, "We'll get a sharper pencil," you know?
Yeah.
So, can you sense that we can actually create affordable in the mix of the others when the developer comes in?
Yeah, I'm confident that we can. I'm confident that there can be a merge and a marriage of both worlds there.
Great, well, thank you, and congratulations for stepping forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, Mr. Corona. The current occupation, you deal with individuals on dialysis in the medical field?
No, I don't. My wife does.
Your wife does?
My wife does.
Are you in that current field now?
No, I'm not.
You retired?
No, in fact, I've got two full-time jobs, and now I got a third.
Okay. No, because I was looking at the form that was completed, and it only mentioned that dialysis...
No, that's... My wife is a registered dialysis nurse and was Director of Nursing for the dialysis unit out in, next to Mission Hills.
What are you, your occupation?
I lecture at Cal State Northridge and am a contracts compliance director for a nonprofit in the city of Terrence.
The issue of open space, you mentioned open space in the Northeast Valley, and gridlock. We currently have some open space, and we've got a lot of gridlock in the Northeast Valley, and as people come in from Santa Clarita, Highway 14 to Highway 5, that gridlock gets worse and worse, and as they keep developing the north part of the county, it creates that jam where people live in one area and work in another area. I know that what we're trying to accomplish is that balance between jobs and housing, and oftentimes a difficult balance, where you can find a residence you can afford and a job that provides the income where you can afford to live in that area. So, we're trying to achieve that balance, even though we have open space, and certain parts of this valley do have a little open space, not a lot, not large parcels, but scattered around. I just want the sensitivity of those of us who are stuck in gridlock many days of the week, just trying to commute around Los Angeles, and that includes the times on the weekend. The other issue that is of concern is senior housing. We have many seniors that are being relocated because of condo conversions, and there's an allowance that goes with that, but people who are seniors who have some kind of a medical disability, it's becoming very troublesome for them. So, I also ask that you be sensitive to the senior population and how we can provide housing for our aging population, quality housing, affordable housing, but it runs the gamut. But it seems that the experience has been with the developers is this issue of penciling out, which is the profit margin for the developers, but little compassion for the people who rely on the city to provide some type of affordable housing, whether it be for the young family or for the senior citizen, in particular, those senior citizens with some type of medical. Are you aware of the issues with that, of the population that we have to deal with with that?
Having, hitting that mark next year, yes, I am aware of that. Having lived in the valley all my life, I've seen the growth and the aging of the valley, so I'm aware of how it's pushing up against the hills and the margins thereof. So, yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you very much, and welcome to the city family. As was stated, you'll be spending a lot of hours, because as these projects go through, it's a long, cumbersome process, so...
I'm gathering that.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas.
Richard, I know how busy you are. Are you crazy? I say that because you're very involved in the community already. You work with a lot of not-for-profits. You teach over at Cal State Northridge, and this... I know you know what you're getting into. I'm just amazed that you're willing to give even more. But being a resident of the Northeast Valley, I can understand why you're doing that. But one thing I wanted to ask you is, when it comes to the... After you've studied up on all the information, and then you're going to be hearing a lot from the community members on various sides or aspects of the project, how do you feel your... What gives you the confidence to know that you're going to be able to be sometimes Solomon and split the baby, or sometimes have to say, "No, this project doesn't work," or what have you? How do you feel about that? I know the fact that you're a resident, I know your involvement in the community, but can you tell us, not so much us, but the people watching, why you're willing to give that commitment to the community?
Well, I think that you're right. I have been a member of this community for all my life. I was born in Van Nuys, at Van Nuys Hospital. My grandparents got there in 1918, so I'm very concerned about how the growth would take place within the valley and the citizens within that valley, the people within that valley, from the Canoga Park down to Pacoima, Arlita, and the items that go in there. So, yeah, it would be, it is going to be difficult. There should be growth, but I think smart growth is what's in order here, and the people's interest should always be put up in the forefront of anything that takes place.
Well, you live here, many of the students that you teach live here. Much of your family and friends are the constituents that you're going to be serving, so I look forward to your service. I'm glad to see that you're willing to take on more. Thank you very much. It's a big task. I know you know what you're getting into. I just want to thank you personally for giving more to the community as you've given so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to add my congratulations, Richard. We've had a chance to sit down over the years and your dedication to this community and your understanding of the balance that you need to have in the preservation of some of our open space. And part of the North Valley covers Sunland Tahunga for me and Lakeview Terrace, which will be part of what you'll be talking about. And it's really for us a battleground of trying to protect that rural nature and the mountains. So I just also want to say, I don't know how you'll do it, but I know, I think of that old adage of busy people get a lot of things done and I think that you fit into that category. So thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Wendy.
Nice to see you. Okay, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations. Nicely. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Madam President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
Yes, we will take a public comment. I think what we'll do is, we do have three from downtown, I will take them all together. Can we be able to access City Hall in downtown? I'd like to call the following individuals. We'll wait till we get access to downtown. They're ready, there you go. I'd like to call me Chang first, followed by Richard, I think it's Robinson, followed by Charles Griffin. Ms. Chang.
Yes, good morning. My name is Myung Chang from 4th District. I'm here to talk about Osteria Labuka Restaurant located at 52 Ten and a Half Melrose Avenue. My apartment and the restaurant are separated by 10-foot private driveway due to the proximity. I have been having problems with their operational conditions for two years. I'd like to see changes are made to mitigate the current situation. My concerns are as follows. Public nuisance for two years. A, daily kitchen activity noise such as clanking and banging pots, dishes, pans and utensils, et cetera during the hours when the kitchen back door and windows are open. Usually from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., even after they are closed, I hear the same noise from my bedroom. B, slamming the side wood gate, kitchen door and top metal garbage dispenser. C, dragging things in the cement area in the back during the closing hour. D, uncovering the top of garbage dispenser with the waste in it. E, loitering at the entrance of the driveway by the restaurant people and patrons. Two, dumping drainage from the cement area outside of the kitchen in the back to the driveway. Dirty water goes all the way down to the parking lot where my car is located. Three, someone bummed it on the edge of the driveway facing my bedroom. Four, patrons go all the way back to the private parking area and urinate. Proposals. One, some kind of restriction is incorporated so the kitchen door and windows are closed early and patrons do not loiter around the entrance of the driveway and their people stop slamming. Also, replacing the top, the metal garbage dispenser with plastic will help. Two, the uses of the driveway should only be for trash removal. That's what the building owner of the apartment allowed the restaurant to use. This will reduce the frequency of using the side gate and so the slamming the wood gate. Just one more sentence. After all, I just want to stop nuisance so that I can live quietly and peacefully in this neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chang. Yes, Mr.?
You're going to go to my office at City Hall at 480?
Okay.
So someone could...
Ms. Chang, if you can hear us there, we'd like you to go to Mr. Labonge's office, room 480, up on the fourth floor and provide them with your information. Thank you. Richard Robinson, our next speaker?
Our next speaker?
Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson.
I don't see Mr. Robinson. Charles Griffin?
Charles Griffin?
Madam Chairman, my name is Charles Griffin. I'm from Newport Beach in Orange County. I was born at Third and Grand 78 years ago. I've been in Orange County since I've been married on Balboa Island and now reside in the East Bluff. Yesterday morning, had a glorious morning, I looked and I can look from my bedroom and see Catalina and Palos Verdes in the City Hall and Mount Wilson and Mount Baldy. This morning, it was covered with brown haze. I had to come to the City Hall to see if my hometown was still here. And whereas, whereas AB 32 legislation requires a drastic reduction in the production of carbon dioxide in California by planes, trains, automobiles, electrical power plants and industry, and whereas therefore it is not appropriate to expand the production of carbon dioxide by expanding Los Angeles International and you should move the airplane operations to Palmdale. Therefore, the future interstate, transcontinental and international travel market should be funded by $5 billion for 100 miles of two elevated, high-speed, 300 mile-per-hour non-stop express, high occupancy vehicle lanes on the I-5 freeway from the 125 acres owned by the Orange County and Orange County Transportation Association contiguous to the railroad tracks at the closed El Toro Marine Corps Station in the city of Irvine to State Road 14 and on to the Palmdale Airport. These special magnetic levitation, high occupancy vehicle lanes that are defined in the Southern California Association of Governments 2004 Regional Transportation Plan should, would also accommodate entrance and exit ramps for express and local commuter maglev airline vehicles and air cargo vehicles serving other population center like Anaheim and Los Angeles Union Station located along the essentially straight route, I'll be one sentence, backbone of this contaminated Southern California airbase. And only these sections of the high vehicle lanes are powered and are directly under the maglev vehicles, all sections being controlled electronically by the Central Air Traffic Control Facility and funded by the Federal Aviation Agency. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming from Newport Beach. I do see two other individuals in the audience there. We do not have any additional cards, so if you are interested in speaking, please provide them to the clerk that is there. We do have several speaker cards here today, colleagues, and so I'd ask those of you, if you can be as brief as possible, we will give each two minutes at this time. If we begin to find that we have any quorum challenges, we'll give one minute. But I'd like to now call on Duke Russell, followed by Chuck Tenen.
President Gruehl, members of the City Council, good morning. My name is Duke Russell. I'm an alumnus of Hollywood High and Los Angeles City College, as is actor Clint Eastwood and other thousands. I know education is not your responsibility, but during the past years, I have spoken over 40 times to the District Board of Trustees regarding what has happened at LACC, but to no avail. So many believe we need new trustees who will tell presidents who they hire what to do when serious things happen to students. We're all very fortunate to have four dedicated men running for trustees. I trust Guy Motto, Joseph Esseveri, Roy Burns and Guy Gerul to become great trustees, which thousands of LAUSD graduates want, need and deserve. I would like all of you to vote for them and I would like you to tell your constituents to vote for them. They believe, as I do, that sports and PE classes must be protected and increased in the community colleges. The LAUSD does the city a great service by providing many sports for girls and boys which inspire them to stay in school and graduate. Football is but one example. Why no football for 20 years at Los Angeles City College where Councilmember Tom Labonge and Parks played? Six LACs provide football. Money is no problem. During the past eight years, a huge non-education golf driving range was built at LACC. Beautiful 75-year-old Snyder Field for football, soccer, softball and track and field was destroyed in 2004 for a parking lot and future buildings, for future buildings also, which obviously should replace the golf range. The 21-row stadium was destroyed in 2005 and in 2006, the Arteco Men's Basketball Gym was destroyed. Barack Obama, Barack Obama said on Meet the Press, he is very worried about young people standing on corners with nothing to do. We know sports will help many of them and so does he.
Mr. Russell, if I could ask you to conclude.
May I finish, please, please? This is so serious. Al Gore at the Academy Awards said, we must save the environment, but Snyder Field and the environment were destroyed in 2004. That field needs to be rebuilt.
Mr. Russell, we do have to stick to the two minutes because we do have several. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you. Mr. Tenen.
Good morning, Councilmembers, Madam President, Chuck Tenen. With regard to the 9 and 17 relocation ordinance, Herb, with all due respect, I'd like to know why an amendment was unexpectedly presented at the Plum Committee last Tuesday and the public was not allowed to look at your proposed amendment. I'm not a politician, but an affected tenant, like many. I was under the impression that on a public hearing agenda item, that the public was allowed to comment and give their input in the city government decision-making process that affects all our lives. At the previous Plum Committee, everyone thought the 9 and 17 was a matter of numbers and an ordinance was going to be drawn up and voted by, at the next Plum Committee. What happened? Why the change? Such an important, critical issue that took 10 months to get this far, that will affect our tenants in the city of Los Angeles with regard to Ellis Act, tenants' right and protection and one and a half months at the Planning Commission. Perhaps the city attorney would accommodate us, the affected tenants, by giving us justification on why a new amendment that was surprisingly put forth at the Plum last week after public comments were made on the original ordinance, of which 60 cards, people that did not get an opportunity, including myself, because the committee was an hour late in getting started, and two weeks in a row, a lot of cards were not put there. Herb and Ed, would you, we would appreciate it if you would be kind enough to explain to us the sudden action and enlighten us in justifying the reasoning so that tenants and developers alike can feel like they are included in the city government decision-making process that affects all of us and that we clearly understand it. Is this how our city government does business and passes things? The cost of doing business and the cost of living should include the public's input in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenen. Michael Calder.
Last November, over the BBC, there was 12 minutes of a new documentary on the Robert Kennedy assassination. The filmmaker Shane O'Sullivan has film of CIA agents in the Embassy Room of the Ambassador Hotel just prior to the Kennedy's last speech. They're there in the aftermath of the shooting as well. What concerned me was, this was not covered by the US media, ABC, CBS, NBC, CNN, they did not cover the story, nor did the New York Times or LA Times. So I'm asking the City Council if you would contact the general managers of the local TV stations as well as the editor of the LA Times and just ask them to cover the story. You might ask them why they didn't cover it in the first place. Second point, though, is if CIA agents are in front of Kennedy while he's giving his last speech, are there other CIA agents in the pantry waiting for him? And if the CIA killed Bobby like they did John, that may mean that Sirhan Sirhan was falsely convicted for the assassination and has spent his entire life in prison. He still has no memory of how he even got in the pantry and he has no memory of shooting Bob. May I give all the information you need to the Sergeant at Arms?
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When UCLA distributes that. Thank you. Our next speaker is Hayward, excuse me, Nishikawa or Nishiko?
Hayward.
I said Hayward. Coach Hayward.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I am here because Duke Russell asked me to come up here and I'm the Department Chair at Los Angeles City College for Physical Education and I thought I should do that because if he's coming up here and he's just a citizen, it's my responsibility to come up here and to speak on these issues. About five or six years ago, a bond issue was passed for $2.25 billion and it was given to build or rebuild old buildings at Los Angeles City College. Well, to tell you the truth, nothing has been done except for a couple of parking lots, one of which was paved over for three times, and one of them, the last one, cost $200, no, sorry, $400,000 to do or redo. And our college was allocated $248 million to build a new gym, of which we have nothing built above six inches at City College as of yet. So we're hoping that you can use your influence and if you have an opportunity to talk to other people to get some, something built above ground. I was asked the other day by a new incoming student, he said, Mr. Nishioka, do you have, do you have a pool here? I said, yes, we have a pool. It was built in the 1930s, it's around the corner, you can't see it because there's buildings around. He said, do you have a track? I said, no, we don't have a track because we have a parking lot on it. He said, do you have a field for soccer? I said, no. What about football? No. What about volleyball courts? No, they broke all of that down and we're planning on building it in about, you know, two or three years, it should be built. He said, that's not going to help me. I don't know that I'm going to come to your college. So we need to do something about the situation here because it has been about six years since that bond issue passed and they're going to pass another one for an added amount and I don't know that I can vote for it even if I'm working at City College.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coach, let us know when you're having that meeting at the board so I can go with you and help fight for City College. Thank you, Coach.
President Labonge, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Garcia, followed by David Honda.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm here representing San Fernando Valley Fair and other than the known factors for moving the fair to Woodley Park, as CEO of the fair, I find that a good amount of my time is spent reminding adults what the fair experience is. An annual fair is a childhood experience. I've never met one adult that, when reminded, can't recall or trace some of their memories back to their annual fair. Speaking for myself, I have three daughters, two of which are grown. Every February, they plan for and attend their annual fair, which is in the Coachella Valley where they grew up. I often wonder why adults would travel three hours, stay in a hotel to attend a fair. Why? Because the fair is dear to them. It is a part of their childhood. They danced on the community stage. I, as a mother, videotaped their performances and of course, they were the best, they stood out, I loved it. In this room today are many supporters of this fair who have that same experience. They've experienced it, they want to give it to their children, they want to expand it to other children. Fairs have not changed, but times have. I understand we have gangs, we have drugs, we have a much greater degree of concern for safety. The San Fernando Valley Fair for 2006, based on the state safety report, is impeccable. It was 100% and rated outstanding. We do not take chances. We have asked to move to Woodley Park and for a partial or full street closure because we want to protect the kids and the citizens. We do not take chances. This year, the fair is pleased to offer community, an extended communities outreach to 120 new schools in the Woodley Park area and surrounding. They will be invited free of charge to a school tours day at which they get the full fair experience. In addition to that, we have Ag Day LA, which is a state sanctioned event given by the state to educate children on agriculture, contrary to what they believe is not out of the grocery store.
Catherine, your two minutes has gone up. I think if Mr. Honda could complete, we have to give each individual the two minutes.
I can't close.
Well, if you have one more sentence, what we have allowed is for people to give their last remarks, but...
Okay. I am asking you to reconsider your decision to allow us at Woodley Park to extend our outreach for the fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Honda.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Honorable Councilmen. My name is David Honda. I'm speaking with a cold. I'm the current Chairman of the 51st District Agriculture Association of the State of California. Our mission is to produce the historic San Fernando Valley Fair. This year will mark our 61st, if we're granted the opportunity, at Woodley Park. We come before you to plead our case. The 51st District Agriculture Association entered into a good faith contract on or about December... about December 2006 with the City of Los Angeles, Reckon Parks, to produce the annual fair at a centrally-located venue, the heart of the San Fernando Valley, the Sepulveda Basin. It was just recently, February 21st and 27th, that we received correspondence from the City Reckon Parks Council, District 6, that our contract has been amended unilaterally without consent with deal points that are unacceptable as a state fair, and suggested that we return to Hanson Dam, our previous venue, which we were unsuccessful in raising the paid gate attendance. We have reached out to the entire community, but our attendance has not returned since the days of Burbank and our original start at Damashe Downs. Most people in the valley, especially myself, remember the days of horse, pig racing, dusty roads, hot dogs and beer, cotton candy, snow cones, and the arts and crafts. The San Fernando Valley Fair was an agricultural community in those days. We're going to have memories of what was yesterday as kids and today as senior citizens. It's still a memory. My hope is today is I have you go back and reflect on those days and give compassion to what we are envisioning for the future children to remember: hot dogs, snow cones, cotton candy, tigers, sea otters, and entertainment of yesteryears. Last year, we headlined the Coasters, Platters, and Drifters. The year before, Gary Lewis and the Playboys wore tiara. Do you remember those days? I know I do. Our dream is to have our children and grandchildren remember today's fair, a great fair called the San Fernando Valley Fair. Don't let this dream fail the children. Please reconsider the amendments and allow us to do what we're charged to do, and that is to produce the historic 61st San Fernando Valley Fair, June 7th to 10th, at Woodley Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honda. Our next speaker is Ron Berkowitz from the Recreation and Parks Department. As many of you know, this item is not before us on the agenda today. There's no action that we can take because of the Brown Act, and so I think the department wanted to speak in public comment. Again, we still have other public comment cards as well. Mr. Berkowitz.
Madam Chairman, Madam President, council members, I'm Ron Berkowitz, Recreation and Parks, Parks Superintendent. I just want to give you a quick overview of our process. We did sign, I signed a letter of intent to proceed with the process to look into the feasibility of Woodley Park, to possibly increase the attendance of the Valley Fair. We believe in the Valley Fair, as does CD 6 and all the members of the community. Upon our review, we found that the Woodley Park could not accommodate the fair for several reasons. Some of the reasons were the water hookups were not for the animals, we didn't have enough hookups, electrical hookups, space, and we had a lot of turf areas. Closing Woodley, or even a partial closure, would impact safety issues. I dealt with Department of Transportation, and one of the main issues, the reason that I called the Valley Fair several times to come to the table to meet with Recreation and Parks, they ignored my phone calls. I have documentation of all the emails I sent them. The idea of the letter of intent that we have along with Hanson Dam was the idea to negotiate terms of the agreement, such as rates and fees, what they were going to do, if they needed an alcohol permit. This has been going on for years. We welcome the Valley Fair. We will be able to accommodate the Valley Fair at Hanson Dam, the same as last year. We will be able to accommodate the community. We just need to get to the table to resolve this. I've tried since January to talk to their chairman, talk to somebody from the Valley Fair. I've done my best. The only reason I made a phone call, and I don't do business like that, is to try to communicate with the Valley Fair, and that's why I'm here today, to resolve the issue. I can accommodate them as quickly as possible at Hanson Dam, and I will commit to do that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog.
Thank you, Wendy. I go to so much trouble to get here. I was the first person. I was here so early, there wasn't one person here yet, so thank you for calling me up.
And I apologize. It just handed to me in a stack, so...
Okay, I appreciate that. So first of all, I went to the SCAG meeting yesterday, because in case you haven't heard, Southern California Association of Governments, they hand out money regionally, and we have 15 positions. Only three people showed up again yesterday. Thank you, Councilmember Parks, Zein and Smith, for showing up. So what's happening is we're getting outvoted for state and federal money by Mayberry and unincorporated cities. We're getting our butt kicked. It's real humiliating. And then we need some 405 money. The mayor's got to go sit there and stand out in the street and panhandle for 405 money. Show up in SCAG and vote for it, y'all. That's the way to do it, y'all. Don't let Barney Fife beat us in the federal and state money. Now, the other thing that's very important is we have elections coming up this week, next week on Tuesday. I'd like to urge everybody, please make sure you vote. Please get out there. Even, Dion, you let that guy talk about the LEUSD other election things, but you won't let me, but I'm not going to say who to vote for. Just please vote. We got LEUSD elections, we got council member elections. If you want to find out about the council members running in CD 14 tonight, Zuma Dog, Voice of the Pueblo, hosts on Time Warner, Public Access, 7:00 PM, the CD 14 Candidate Forum. We have both candidates that will be participating, Para and Jimenez, and that'll be good. And also, density, you want to have the Olympics here? I was on Doug McIntyre today. I said, "Sorry, you can't have the Olympics. There's not enough infrastructure. It's not like 25 years ago. Please don't do this to the city. The highways can't accommodate the side streets. We don't have police to run one day of the city here without Olympics. What's going to happen when we don't have enough, when we got Olympics? Officer Landry's retiring. That's going to be one less police. We can't hire enough new cops. That's a real problem." And density, no more high density. The streets, the freeways, the schools, the trash, the fire cannot accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Lefort, followed by Linda Pruitt.
Good morning, Ms. Gruel and council members. I'm here, I am a member of the West Van Nuys Lake Baboa Neighborhood Council Board. I am not speaking as a board member, but as an individual who lives in the area near the Sepulveda Dam Basin. I have a lot of concerns about the issue of, that we originally saw of the San Fernando Valley Fair going into the Sepulveda Dam Basin. A couple of things really struck me hard. Street closure, and it was even mentioned this morning, possible street closure, and I think that's still on their table. It's terrible traffic situation in the area every morning and every evening. With Woodley Avenue open to take some of the load off of Victory and Burbank Boulevard, you know, and Victory and the other streets running east and west, people can get down to Burbank Boulevard or up from it. I'm really concerned about them closing it during the week for many days. The only other festival that has ever gone on in the park that they've closed Woodley Avenue for, if I remember, is Israeli Festival, which is on a Sunday, one day only. I have concerns about the parking issue, whether or not they're charging for parking, because that was an issue with previous festivals, where the people who just wanted to use the park and not attend any particular, particular thing going on there would be able to park for free as they normally do. I'm concerned about the use of alcohol in the park. If this is a family thing and we're concerned about safety, as was mentioned here already, we don't need people getting drunk on beer or wine, and I believe that, you know, regulations in the city is that no drinking in the parks, and I think that needs to be enforced. There's concern about the hours and reference to using the orange line to get in and out to the fair, but the orange line shuts down before the, you know, midnight hour, so I don't know about people being able to use the orange line and go to see the entertainment late in the evening.
Thank you very much. Mr., excuse me, Linda Pruitt, followed by Rosie Sines and Chris Olenkamp.
Good morning, President Gruel and council members, and I want to thank you all for being here again. We really appreciate your coming out to the valley. And yes, I too am here speaking as an individual citizen, even though I am president of the West Van Nuys Lake Baboa Neighborhood Council. I do have concerns about the Valley Fair. While I support the idea of a San Fernando Valley Fair and have been to it numerous times myself, I really question the Woodley Park venue as a place to hold it. I am very concerned about the number and size of people that are going to be there for several days. I don't think there's ever been anything quite that large at Woodley Park, and even with much smaller events there, we have great disruption of our neighborhood, and this does concern me. I too, like Mr. Lefort, am concerned about alcohol and people leaving the park in the evenings, being dumped out onto residential streets in the area, having consumed beer and wine. This is a residential area that borders that park, and I am very concerned about that. The noise, of course, is a consideration in a residential area. We're concerned about that. And again, the closing of Woodley Avenue for even one day during the week is just a nightmare to even think about. I do hope you will consider this when you make your final decision on this Valley Fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Rosie, followed by Chris, followed by Melrose Larry Green. And again, as I indicated, we do have several public comment cards, so if you, things have been said, you know, again, brevity would be welcomed. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rosie Sines. I'm a West Van Nuys Lake Baboa resident. I am here this morning to share my concerns, which are based on comments that had been made at our last West Van Nuys Lake Baboa Neighborhood Council meeting. These are my concerns. The entertainment till very late is going to, is going to really affect our neighborhood. We've had complaints from other events that have been held there, so that's just not acceptable. Serving alcohol, not acceptable, not in our neighborhood. We don't want it there. And especially with gang problems, we definitely don't want it there. The closing of Woodley, which is going to cause traffic overflow on the other streets, and if they close it down on Thursday and Friday, it's already a mess. The traffic is already a mess there. For those of us that have to go to work, I don't even want to think about it. The park is going to be trashed out, so who's going to be cleaning up the mess? That's what I want to know. And what effects is this going to have on our wildlife there? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Olenkamp.
Good morning. My name is Chris Olenkamp. I'm president of the San Fernando Valley Audubon Society, and we have significant concerns about this project or proposal. We are opposed to the proposal. We have over 2,000 members in the San Fernando Valley, and we're concerned about the wildlife impacts of this project being a multi-day event, where it'll be, there will be lighting and there will be noise for the generators for the light and security lighting 24 hours, as well as the noise and impacts from the speakers amplified music. It seems to me that if agricultural fair has changed over time, it is no longer an agricultural fair, and they're turning it into a rock concert in order to get the attendance, and that's what they've, they've shown that attendance is the problem, and they're trying whatever they can do to get the attendance. The Sepulveda Basin, a wildlife area, is immediately adjacent to where they're proposing to hold this event. We have seen over 230 different species of birds in that area, and there are several threatened and endangered and sensitive species in that area, which are just now getting introduced. In the last year, there have been two sensitive species which are breeding right along Woodley Avenue during the summertime when this event will be held. It's difficult to address the impacts on a specific basis, because the conditions and the proposals have changed, not entirely due to the proponents, but also due to Reckon Parks, which we have problems communicating with as well. But we know that the impacts will be significant, primarily because it's a multi-day event and it's just too large of an event for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Melrose Larry Green, followed by Shelby Hawks, followed by Francine Marsal.
Good morning. Thank you, President Gruel. I just got a couple of minutes here, so I'll be very, very brief. It's a very busy time in the year for all of us, and the reason why I'm here this morning is I want to talk about my friend Abel, who works at a club in West Hollywood that I work at. It's a comedy club. Abel cleans the bathrooms there. He mops the floors. He buses the tables. He is an illegal immigrant. I think it is absurd that so many hard-working people are in this city who are working in hotels, in bars, in restaurants, and they're not protected by the LA City Council, by the US Congress, by the state legislature. And the whole country is watching the LA City Council. The elephant in the room is illegal immigration in this country, and 99.9% of these people are not criminals, they're not gang members, they're not bad people. And I'm calling this morning, on March 2nd, 2007, on the LA City Council to pass some sort of a resolution facilitating the road to citizenship. Not consular cards, not green cards, not visas, not residency, but citizenships for people like my friend Abel. And Ed and Tony, I'm talking to you right now. Hombre hasta hombre, you can speak Spanish too, and so gringo. But Bill, also, I did your TV show too many years ago, and I ran for mayor in 1993, and I'd like to bring Abel down here one day to meet you, and maybe you can all help him get on the road to citizenship. I only got a few seconds left, but that's my words about Abel. We know the election is Tuesday. I've watched all your commercials on TV and announcements, and, you know, I, there are a lot of good people running, and I think we all know, it's a foregone conclusion who's going to win, but the people running against Tony and the other seat are good people, too, and everybody should vote. I'm going to run the marathon on Sunday, but not the whole race. I'm going to run the first six miles through Hollywood, then jump on the subway and run into Boyle Heights and do some campani for Jose Uizar. I got to get back to work. I'm an accountant, too. This is tax season. Good luck, everybody. Thank you. I am Melrose Larry Green.
Shelby Hawks? And Francine?
Thank you, City Council, for letting me speak. I'm here today to express my feelings, how important the fair is to me and my family. The fair helps me further my education in the animal sciences. I'm a student at Sepulveda Junior High Gifted Magnet, and the sciences are my passions. Last year was my first year competing in the fair, and I was able to see my hard work have meaning. I showed my rabbits and won the ribbons and belt buckle. I was proud of it because I was able to become more aware of my love for animals. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And are you Shelby or Marsal?
This is Shelby.
That's Shelby. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll take this back. I'm going to take that back. The rabbit's name is Cutie, and she's an award-winning rabbit.
And are you Marsal?
I am Francine Marsal, and I want to thank the City Council for allowing me to speak today. I am a parent and a member of our community, a homeowner, and a supporter of the San Fernando Valley Fair. As a parent, the fair stands for accountability, responsibility, and even compassion. That life lessons that are afforded our children at the fair by their participation is priceless, and it's something you just can't replace. The fair provides a lot of family time in our community, and it is a good family environment. It brings community awareness and financial support to our community as well. Moving our fair into the community in which I own a home has greater visibility in an area where families can bring their children to more pure aspects of life and living in the city, educational opportunities, and even a little fun and music. It can be easily accessed at Woodley Park, and it allows more to participate in a wonderful event that has always proven responsible and respectful in the past. As a San Fernando Valley Fair supporter, I volunteer my time, and I go out to our community businesses, asking them for help to volunteer their time and provide sponsorship funds so that our children can maintain their positions within the fair. All I'm asking is for you to please award our children the opportunity to show more community members, teach other children their age what it's all about to be in a pure environment, and help us keep it at Woodley Park where it can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Turner, followed by Rosemary White. Jeanette Turner.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My parents moved here from Cleveland in 1956, and my dad was hired at Rockodyne, and my parents bought a house in Woodland Hills, and that's where I grew up. And I'm here to tell you that so many lives are being affected in a terrible way every day. I live on what used to be a very quiet hilltop cul-de-sac in Woodland Hills against the Santa Monica Mountain Range. The house next door at 20900 Banderas Street recently sold, and from the day she moved in, the new owner began shooting... in, the new owner began shooting pornographic films and still shots. Her name is Amanda Boisvert, or Amanda McGuire, and the filming has gone on constantly ever since. My neighbors and I are offended and very frustrated. Ms. Boisvert has been a nuisance from the very beginning and has interfered with the quietness of the neighborhood. We are all feeling the stress. Every day, my neighbors and I have to deal with all the cars being crammed together and illegally parked on our street, and the parade of characters moving equipment in and out of the house, hanging around and leaving their trash on our street. I can see cameras flashing and people adjusting lights and other equipment from my kitchen window. I saw and heard, along with several vice officers, Ms. Boisvert performed sex with a man. I constantly witnessed people doing drugs on the balconies. I used to look out at the beautiful mountains, and now looking out of my kitchen window is like watching a porn movie, and I'm sick of it. I, along with my neighbors, made phone calls and sent emails to Mr. Reels. We talked to Mr. Reels at Councilman Seines' office, and he's told us there's nothing he can do about it. And I'm asking you to please, oh, the vice officers from the West San Fernando Valley made two separate arrests at this woman's house.
Okay, thank you. And I know Mr. Seines just wanted to comment real quickly, and since it is in his district.
Thank you. Mr. Perry is going to be getting the information from you. We've had that situation take place in other parts of Tarzana and Woodland Hills, and we have, well, it's not everywhere in the valley. There's certain areas, if you'd like me to respond, I'll respond to your statement. We have areas within this city and this valley where that activity takes place, and we've worked with the LAPD Vice Operation, and we've worked with the Neighborhood Councils, and we've worked to shut them down through Film LA. And Mr. Perry's going to get the information from you. I will be dealing with Mr. Reels and Film LA to make sure this matter is addressed, also with the Police Department. There's no way that any neighborhood should be subjected to this. And if it's happening to the degree that you are commenting on, I can assure you that that activity will cease, and if arrests need to be made, that will take place. Mr. Perry's going to get all the information from you, but we will definitely follow up on it today. I thank you for being here.
Rosemary White, followed by Elise Wells, followed by Richard Hawks.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Dr. Rosemary White. I have an office at 16255 Ventura Boulevard in Encino, and I'm the elected representative of the Encino Neighborhood Council, representing parks, open space, and recreation. I wish to comment on the request of the San Fernando Valley Fair to hold their event in the park areas of the Sepulveda Basin this summer. I am opposed to the Valley request to have a four-day event in the basin. Additionally, the request to sell alcoholic beverages and remain partying until 12:00 a.m. as requested is not appropriate for this location and goes against the rules of this family park, as has been the attitude of the prior people that have commented. Further, as the Chair of the Sierra Club Wildlife and Endangered Species Committee, the anticipated location of a four-day event located close to the only designated wildlife area in the city of Los Angeles is not correct, and it is not fair. We have migrating birds such as Canada geese and Ross's geese and other species residing in the area now, as Chris Olencamp has mentioned. No one is against a fair. As a matter of fact, I will share with you and the people from the fair. I come from a circus family. I was born and raised, as my mother was about to give birth, we, she got off the show train and went to the hospital, and I was born on the Sioux Indian Reservation in Ontario. And then they got back on the show train and went across Canada. And my entire childhood was on the show and the circus. We did not have alcoholic beverages, we did not have wild animals. So I also have memories of hot dogs and popcorn and so forth, but in this particular case, it is not appropriate. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker, Ms. Wells.
Hello, and good morning. My name is Elise Wells, and I am a member of the Canoga Park FFA. I would just like to comment on the San Fernando Valley Fair and talk about the benefits of having the fair and showing an animal at the fair. Last year, I showed a meat pen, which is a meat pen of rabbits, and since I live in an urban setting, I have no other way to deal with animals, to get the experience, to have this experience, to have the ability to show animals. Also, I want to go into the veterinary industry, and without this experience, I would not be able to go in because I just don't have enough experience being in an urban setting. It also teaches us responsibility, to care for an animal, to, how to budget our time better, to take care of something that animal depends on you. We also make money from the fair for our college. A lot of us don't have the money for college, and this way, we make the money. It's a great experience just in general. A lot of our kids talk about it all year long, trying to go to the fair, and they can't, just can't wait for it next year. And a lot of us, this is just our passion to work with the animals, and I would hate to see it not be able to happen this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Hawks, followed by Art Hanson, followed by Steve Finley.
Hi, my name is Richard Hawks, and I am a student at Canoga Park High School and a part of the Canoga Park FFA. And I'd like to comment on, comment on the fair because it's a big learning experience for all the students at our school. We, we show animals and really compete against each other to be the best that we can be, and it really gives us a lot of opportunities to really become better at what we do, and it really expresses our passion for the animals and how we care for them, and we learn so many new techniques on how to really care for them properly and all the medicines that we need to give for them for when they're sick, and it really opens up a lot of agricultural doors to colleges and a lot of opportunities just arise when, when we go to fairs like this because it's just so helpful for the students. And this year would be my last year there showing, but I would like it to be a memorable, a memorable one where I can show and really have a great time in my community, where I can really help the other people there see the love for agriculture and my passion for animals. So thank you for letting me talk, and have a nice day.
Thank you. Art Hanson, followed by Steve Finley.
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Art Hanson. I live in West Hills. Following these kids is a hard act to follow, but I'm on the same page with them in terms of the San Fernando Valley Fair. I'm retired LAUSD many years ago, but I'm still involved with the San Fernando Valley Fair and the Livestock Committee. Earlier this week, I learned about the problem and the roadblocks that were set up for the fair moving to Woodley Park. I'm very concerned about it because I know what these kids do. They invest money in their animals. You saw a rabbit today, but that's probably better than bringing in a 900-pound steer or some pigs or sheep, which kids have much more money invested in. I guess my bottom line is this to you, the council. What are these kids to do with their livestock in which they have monetary investments if there is no fair and junior livestock show and auction? So that's my question to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Finley, followed by Miriam Fogler.
Good morning, council members. My name is Steve Finley, and I am a Recreation Director for the City of Los Angeles, and I'm here because Duke Russell also asked me to come and speak regarding the Junior College Board of Trustees election on Tuesday. I have a son, well, first of all, I was born here in Los Angeles in the Crenshaw District. I graduated from UCLA, and I'm also a Vietnam veteran. And I have a son that is attending junior college right now. He was an all-city baseball player at Los Angeles High School last year, and there was no place for him to go to play baseball in Los Angeles. So he is now at Glendale College. Trade Tech, Santa Monica, West LA, and also Southwest College do not have baseball teams. And I live five minutes from West LA, and I have to send my son to Glendale. So what I'm saying is that we need new leadership from the Board of Trustees, from the Board of Trustees for the community colleges. We need new leadership. I've been working with kids for over 30 years, and when kids come to me and say, in the city, when they come to me and say, I want to play sports and go to school, where can I go, Coach? And my answer is, you're going to have a hard time getting where you have to go because you'll have to go out of the city just to play sports and go to school. There's an article in the LA Times today regarding this election on Tuesday with the Community College Board of Trustees, and basically statewide, the dropout rate in the community colleges is 76%.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Fogler? Miriam Fogler?
It's getting to the afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, the City Council, and I hope the county supervisors, everybody here, this. But I used to go to the fair when I was a kid, Devonshire Downs, and if they can do certain things, both of the parties can come to an understanding so that we can continue having the fair here in the valley. I grew up here, lived here and everything. I used to go here to the Core Health, everything on my bike when I was a kid, everything. So a lot of things are happening, so, you know, one thing that did surprise me, though, you guys, ladies and gentlemen, surprised the people, surprised me that you would try to extend the term limit, and you got it through. I'm hoping that will be repealed. I know, even though, I know what Tony's feeling about that, but anyway. What else I want to say is that I don't like the way the salaries are going for the City Council people, either or the county, or for that matter, the LAUSD. So the term limits have to be tuned terms, and also the salaries need to be adjusted and need to be fairly done here because 20,000 a year is way too much compared to other people who, like Department of War and Power, got the best raise, and yet you don't give anything to the city workers and the police department. Our cops, what's wrong? We're losing police, and we're losing, we're going to lose fine people, the Engineering Department of 501, and other people in the unions here. We need to pay, to pay these people very good wages so we can have, our city have a good structure so that we can meet the needs of tomorrow for the people coming here to live here and work here and play. We need to make sure that our structures are done very carefully and evaluated very carefully how we build the homes, the houses, the buildings, so that we can make sure that they're safe, that people can get out safely in case of an earthquake, and not having them real high skyrisers like, you know, taking money from the taxpayers, using tax increment money.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dennis DeYoung.
Good morning, and thank you for coming out to the San Fernando Valley. My name is Dennis DeYoung. I'm a resident in Northridge, California, and I'm a former board member of the Northridge West Neighborhood Council. And I'm here today as a member of the Board of the 51st District Agricultural Association, which is the state agency that's tasked with putting on the San Fernando Valley Fair. And my comments are limited to, we're meeting soon after this meeting, and our options are pretty limited. I can tell you that sentiment from the board is not to go back to Handsome Dam. We've had a real bad experience there, and what Mr. Brookwitz failed to mention was that last year, they took away the parking lot for public parking, and so they rented to Valley Crest Tree Service. So we basically are unable to have parking at the Handsome Dam site, plus a bunch of other reasons. We really are not going to return to Handsome Dam. I think our options are pretty much limited to canceling the fair outright, which would be a travesty for the San Fernando Valley Fair, or relocating to Santa Clarita Valley or Castake, which could be an option, and I'm not sure if we would return. And just a little bit of history about me. My dad was in the North Hollywood FFA, my mom was in Encino 4H. They met at the San Fernando Valley Fair back in the 1950s. I met my wife when I was 12, back at the San Fernando Valley Fair. I have a lot vested in the fair, and it's been a great experience for people, you know, the public, and, and if you can just think about this, if the Pomona City Council told the LA County Fair that they had to close every night at 6 o'clock, do you think that would really work for the LA County Fair? It's the same kind of interest restrictions that we're getting from, from the Council District 12 or 6. So anyways, upshot is, is I really hope that we can have a fair this year. I would hate to have to be on the board at the, during a term or period where we have to cancel the fair. It would be a great loss to the City of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley. And so I just appreciate your support, and I know you can't vote on anything, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Glenn Bailey, followed by Sharon Brewer, followed by Brendan Huffman. And Glenn, I did follow up, sent an email after I saw you outside about bicycle racks.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Bailey. I'm a lifelong Valley resident. I also am a board member of the Encino Neighborhood Council and one of the eight group representatives on the Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Area Steering Committee. I had almost 30-year track record with regards to concerns about Sepulveda Basin, going back to the days when the Hollywood Park Racetrack wanted to move lock, stock, and barrel into the Sepulveda Basin. So I am definitely an advocate for the Sepulveda Basin. But what we have here, I'm also a fan of the San Fernando Valley Fair, having attended it back in the days when it was at Devonshire Downs, and I remember when we had to fight Sacramento to get the fair back, and I, I'm here today because I don't want to see a lapse in the fair again. And I also think that there has been a great unfairness to the fair and to the people associated with, and the people of the Valley in Los Angeles, based on what has happened in this situation. I have in front of me, and I have facts to several of the Valley Council offices, the agreement signed by Recreation and Parks and the fair that is dated December 5th, and the first sentence says that the association, the fair association, and the Department of Recreation and Parks is hereby granted permission, the fair is hereby granted permission by the Recreation and Parks to use Woodley Park, Areas 1 and 2, for the San Fernando Valley Fair, period. That's the agreement. It's signed. This was December 5th. Over two months later, not until over two months later, did the department send a communication saying, no, it's going to be in Handsome Dam. This is absolutely wrong. I can tell you at the Fair Board meeting I attended on Wednesday, that they fair said they could live with one lane on Woodley to closure, there's three lanes each way, plus closing at 10:00 p.m. on the Friday and Saturday nights. I think they've been a good group to be open, unlike some of the other special interest events in the basin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey. Sharon Brewer, followed by Brendan Huffman.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. First, I want to address the Persian New Year event that's scheduled for April, or April 1st, that as of February 28th, I have received no information about this event, and it's less than one month away. So since Wreckham Parks is here, I would hope that they would be able to provide the public with the information regarding this event. San Fernando Valley Fair, this is a council file that Wreckham Parks and everybody had access to and states what the times are, have been for the fair last year, what's required of them. The letter that Recreation and Parks went and sent to the Fair Board is kind of laughable because they knew about what the fair requires way before they even started looking into having the fair at Handsome, or at Woodley Park. Regarding some of the questions, the Irish Fair had alcohol, beer and wine, no problem, so they've allowed it before. When it comes to the street closures, the Israeli festival, one day, they trashed the park and they trashed the street. The West Van Nuys Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council has known about this event since last... last year. In fact, Mr. Honda ended up coming to a meeting and they did not go and express any kind of concern about it. The thing that bothers me about CD six letter, the submission, a plan on how fair organizers will provide for free entrance and free ride tickets to area low-income children and their families, I would like to know whether or not this same request has been made of the Israeli festival and also the Persian New Year event. Basically, there's selective enforcement of rules and what people can and can't do. This event has, already has a signed permit, but yet the Persian New Year event that is April first has no signed event.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Mr. Huffman, followed by Cheryl Burns, followed by Pamela Karate.
Good morning, Council members. Brendan Huffman with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. Just want to make two quick comments about the LA River revitalization plan. VICA, we're very excited about thinking big and making a difference to improve the quality of life. I happen to live right by the LA River and it's, as you know, a flood zone, concrete, not very exciting. At the same time, VICA is also interested in working with you and talking with you about the impact on jobs, particularly as it applies to the industrial zones that border the LA River area. Councilman Reyes is coming out to Sherman Oaks next week to meet with us. We'll start this dialogue. We wanted to make you aware now that we want to find a balance between protecting the jobs we have in the Valley as well as beautifying this great resource and treasure in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Burns, followed by Pamela Karate.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for speaking with, or letting us speak today. I'm a member of the livestock committee at San Fernando Valley Fair. My group is the independent group and we have about ten kids in our group that already have their baby lambs and steers. There's about fifty kids involved in our livestock group. And it's a great experience. They've already put a lot of time, investment, invested money in their animals and we just hope that the opposers and the City Council will change their minds and let us have the fair at Woodley Park and reconsider their decision. The event, I just want to make a couple of comments about the concerts and so forth and making it a rock concert. We've had, I've been involved in the fair for over twenty-five years. I raised animals at the fair when I was a kid as well and now my kids are involved. But we had huge concerts and it was a great, a great deal, families coming out, looking at the animals, going to a concert, eating hot dogs. As far as the alcohol goes, there is a beer garden. We've never had any problems with alcohol problems. People aren't walking around the fair drinking beer and wine. They're in an enclosed area where they can only stay and have their drink there. So I just hope that we could, we can have our fair at Woodley Park and I would hate to see this tradition, longtime tradition, go away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam Plodd, followed by Jamie Cordaro, then Candida Maras.
Hi, I'm here with two hats today. I'm a director on the Fifty-First Ag District and I'm also the chairman of United Chambers of Commerce in the San Fernando Valley. What has happened with the San Fernando Valley Fair, I think, is just deplorable. It's very sad. I don't know how a Reckon Park can come out with and sign a contract and then renege on it later on. This has happened to the San Fernando Valley Fair before. This is my second stint as a director. The first time I was a director, I was chairman for a while and I met with, with Reckon Park Board and got nowhere. I had to go behind them and go to the commissioners and we got a place. We are a fair without a home. And Councilman Cardenas, I really wish that you would reconsider and I know that you want the fair in your district. It's a great, great event and you've seen these kids that came up in front of you to plead their case. These kids are raising their animals and you wonder how they make the money, they make their money by having an auction at the fair. And persons like me can buy those animals and have them butchered. I know that doesn't sound really like the thing to do, but that's what, what happens in the grocery stores and the kids send you thank you letters for buying their animals along with pictures of them. It's a really wonderful, wonderful thing for them to do. And I know it's shocking to some of you, but that's what happens when you go to, see, when you go to the grocery store, you don't realize that that was a cow walking around one day, but it was. And that's what our kids need to see. So we're running out of time, like I probably running out of time. We can't, we have to make a decision today. We can't go to Hanson Dam. We'll lose vendors. We will also lose attendance. So I just plead with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Jamie Cordaro?
Welcome, Madam President, the rest of the City Council to Van Nuys. As President of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, we always enjoy your meetings here in Van Nuys. But aside that, not being the president, I want to mention, you know, we talk about promoting the Valley, having a vibrant economic stimulus, bringing business to the Valley. We have the opportunity to do a lot of things here. You know, it's a win-win situation when everybody can compromise. You listen to a lot of the people that spoke today, you're breaking a lot of hearts. You're going to force this fair committee to move the fair out of the Valley, out of the city of Los Angeles and up to Santa Clarita. Now, if that's the way you get your money for tax revenue and promotion, it's not good business. We need to communicate. We need strong leadership in the Sixth District. Apparently, we don't have it. Tony is known on the street as Phony Tony. I apologize for that, but it's not my, it's not...
Yes.
I understand. I understand.
It's not appropriate.
I apologize, but that's what I'm telling you, what's going on. There's a lack of leadership. It's time for real leadership. I'm looking to build the San Fernando Valley with a vision and I have that vision and I'm looking for the rest of the City Council to come together and rebuild the Van Nuys area, to have a, an Old Town Van Nuys from the Orange Line all the way up to Metro Link. It's a beautiful area that can be revitalized. I want to get a trade school here in the Valley. I'm dealing with sending people over the hill to different schools. I'd love to have a trade school in the Valley. We need something here within the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Next, yes, Mr. Weiss.
Is my mic phone on? Representative, we're fifty-one minutes over the public comment period for this meeting.
We have three, three more speaker cards. Mr. Candida?
Thank you, Madam President. You're always very kind and it's always very nice to see you there. Welcome, everyone, to the Van Nuys, the heart of the San Fernando Valley, and we thank you for allowing us to speak. That's why you brought the City Council here, because you wanted to hear public comments. So again, I thank each and every one of you, especially you, Ms. Han, and the rest of you that traveled so far to come here. We appreciate the fact that you, you listened to us. Again, we have many issues in the, in the Van Nuys area and throughout the Sixth District. One of the things we're trying to do is rebuild and revitalize Van Nuys Boulevard. Later on, we'll be talking about community development, block grant dollars. We lost the money that used to come to Van Nuys Boulevard and with that money, we were able to revitalize some of the boulevards. So when we talk about that item on item thirty-five, I will mention that. But again, thank you for being here and we appreciate the time that you give us here in the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you, Candida. Dr. Weissman, followed by Noel Weiss.
Well, I join my colleagues from Van Nuys Neighborhood Council in welcoming you to the Valley again. I would suggest that we have in this room more neighborhood council people than you've seen in one place in a long time, and I think that's wonderful. I could ask them all to stand, but you know who they are. And the public comment part of this meeting is an extremely important one. We've gone almost an hour over it. I sympathize with Mr. Weiss's wish to get on with his kind of business, but I think this kind of business is what we came here for. Thank you. I'd like to tell you about the meeting that was held at the Neighborhood Council Review Commission last night. It was a marvelous meeting. One or two of the people in this room were at that meeting too. We had the opportunity to see all four of the general managers of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. They started with Rosalynn Stewart, who is now Rosalynn Stewart-Weyman, of course. She had a tour of duty in Ms. Gruehl's office and served our community here very, very well. It went on to Mr. Nelson, who served for the next five years until last April, to Lisa Sarno, who served last April until now, and she's just about to be replaced by Dr. Carol Baker Tharp. Each of these people have different styles of running the department that is so important to us neighborhood councils. I'm just going to mention the theme that each of them said. Ms. Stewart-Weyman's theme would have been, a stakeholder is anyone who wants to participate. Mr. Nelson's theme would be, one size does not fit all. Ms. Sarno's theme would be, we need tools to help the neighborhood councils. And Ms. Tharp's, Dr. Tharp's position is, let us start forming partnerships. We're at a crossroads. We have great hope for Dr. Tharp and her administration of the neighborhood councils. We look for a kinder, gentler neighborhood council department and a much more effective neighborhood councils. The turnout here today, I think, is a good demonstration that we're doing just then. Thank you so much.
Noel Weiss.
Last but not least, Council members, good morning, good afternoon, whatever it is. Mr. Labons, I'm going to try to talk slower because you told me I talk too fast. I'm here to advocate, basically, with all due respect, against Mr. Wesson's provision with regard to the tenant relocation issues. I don't think it was right with regard to how it was done, let alone the substance. What that essentially does, we have a simple proposition here, which is a nine and seventeen, nine thousand and seventeen, plain and simple, recommended by the Planning Commission, not obviously pro-tenant. We have, this same proposal was endorsed unanimously by the Encino Neighborhood Council, that's in Mr. Weiss's district, also the Encino Homeowners Association. Again, not rabid tenant advocates. The Studio City Neighborhood Council also voted unanimously for this provision. It's simple, it's easy. To create, as Mr. Wesson does, a little sliver of tenants, five years or less, and then, and because of the twenty-three-hundred-dollar difference, give them twenty-three-hundred dollars less and basically say, okay, because of twenty-three-hundred dollars, now we have to create this huge bureaucracy, we have to income means, we have to income test people. It makes no sense. It is bad public policy and it is not, I think, consistent with the idea of simplicity in legislation. What we're really, what we really need is to smooth out the rough edges for these people, not create more discord, more animosity, more contentiousness between landlords and tenants. We need a simple proposition that will basically serve the interests of the tenants, which is, and the community as whole, the middle class is really what we're talking about because the middle class is getting reamed in this situation. They are getting destroyed and we need to basically make it so that they can move forward in a way that's fair, that's appropriate and consistent. And you can't do that when we all of a sudden create more bureaucracy. So I'm hoping that there will be some reconsideration, some serious reconsideration, so that we can do this simple, so that we can do it neat, instead of avoid really what amounts to the pretense and more government bureaucracy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to acknowledge Mr. Cardenas. That closes our public comment.
Thank you very much. I know the item of the Valley Fair wasn't agendized, but even though the Brown Act does apply, we do have a right to clarify some gross misrepresentations by some of the people from the fair. With that, the fact of the matter is, ladies and gentlemen, you haven't been told by the fair people this morning that they actually have an agreement, contract for this year and next year over at the Hanson Dam venue. So they actually have a venue provided by the City of Los Angeles to have the fair. So the City of Los Angeles has opened its arms to the fair for many years. Our arms are still open legally and otherwise. The fair can happen this year if the board chooses to. Young people, Shelby and Marcy, if the fair does not happen this year, it is not because of the City of Los Angeles, it's because the fair board have failed you and the people of this community, not the City of Los Angeles. And also to Ms. Garcia and Mr. Honda, please learn how to communicate professionally with the people on the other side of the table. And the reason why I say that is because it's inappropriate for you to come to any venue like this and tell the public that you have an agreement, when you don't have an agreement to have it here in the Sepulveda Basin or Woodley Park, people call it different things. Let me tell you, the agreement that was signed on behalf of the city is actually an intent agreement. And part of the wording that you failed to tell the people who you encouraged to come today is, it is subject to the approval of both parties. It is the beginning, it is the beginning of a transaction. Just like many of you who have ever made an offer on a home, just because you put it in writing and you signed it, until both parties are finalized on all of the parts of the agreement, then it becomes a binding contract. So I really apologize to those of you who came here thinking that there was an agreement to move the venue from one part of the San Fernando Valley to another part of the San Fernando Valley. No, excuse me, that is legally a letter of intent. Mr. Honda knows that, Ms. Garcia knows that. We look forward to working with all of you. And to the young people, separate subject, to the young people, I am ready to work with all of you. My office is just down the hall. Ask for Linda. I will open up my schedule to meet with you here in my Van Nuys office. Come in, I want to sit down with you. I want to help you in any way that I can to help you with venues so that you could show your animals and live your passion. I'm very passionate about children living their dreams and you were very passionate today. You have something you want, one of you wants to be a veterinarian. God bless you. I want to support you in that. So please, come down the hall to my office and you will find out. My doors are open and I welcome helping you in any way that I can. And if you can't show your animals this year at the San Fernando Valley Fair, it's not because of the City of Los Angeles, the fair board makes that decision, not the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Smith?
And I know this is not a debate issue, we can't really talk about it. I thank you, Mr. Cardenas, frustrating some of those issues out. I would ask the city attorney to explain, because a lot of people came here today expecting to see something happen in action. They're petitioning us to do our job, but they need to know the legal constraints, I think, and how this can play out. So if the city attorney could please tell us what the Brown Act restrictions are, what our ability as a council to do, since it's not a commission action, just explain to them the legalities that we have to follow in this kind of a situation.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. This item is not on today's agenda. It cannot be discussed by the council. A council member can give a brief response to a public speaker's comments, and that's what Mr. Cardenas has done to all the comments that were provided this last hour. But we cannot take action, we, I'm sorry, the council cannot take action on anything regarding this, this issue today, and that's pursuant to state law. There's also an issue of the Board of Record, Board and Recreation Parks Commissioners, their jurisdiction and whether the City Council will take jurisdiction of that at a later time. So it's not within the City Council's purview today.
For the clarification, if somebody from this council was to introduce a motion today or next Tuesday to bring it to the council, we still have a restriction of seventy-two hours and the council is on break at the end of next week, so we wouldn't hear it for a week and a half at the soonest. March sixteenth would be the soonest. Legally, we could even discuss it if there was a motion today to do anything. So I just want everybody to understand the legal, legalities of state law and how we deal with issues and it really handcuffs our ability to even discuss this, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, for asking that question, because I'm sure a lot of council members had that same issue. And thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Madam Clerk, our first, our next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number fourteen, and that was called Special Four Cards from the Public.
Marian Fogler.
I'm talking on this matter because we're losing a lot of police officers and I know why, because we're not paying them enough money. If you guys would give up some of your money, the City Council members, of the hundred-and-seventy-thousand you get each year, I bet you we can hire a lot of officers.
Item number fourteen is regarding a main, street lighting district.
What's the matter?
On the what?
The one for, the overtime money for the foothill?
I don't see that as the item...
That was thirty-two, sorry.
Thirty-two, okay. We'll take that item and you can speak on thirty-two. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item number fourteen, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
And, Madam President, that ordinance is over until March sixteenth.
Thank you. Item seventeen, I believe, was a card. Mr. Zuma-Dog?
Since we spent so much time on public comment, I'll waive this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma-Dog. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item number seventeen, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item twenty-nine calls special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han? Ms. Han?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, Mr. Labons called special for you.
Because you're special.
Thank you.
Members, I call the discussions, request of Councilwoman Janice Han, so she could give a little background. Thank you.
This is not the right one. It's the other one. It's number thirty. Actually, it was thirty that I wanted to...
Okay. Well, we'll do, we'll vote on this, and then we'll reconsider item 30. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. If we could reconsider item number 30. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And 29 was just an extension of a reward, but I really wanted to call this one special. It's very much a part of what's happened in the Harbor Gateway area. And while a lot of attention, and for me, actually, I even use the word "the tipping point" for gang violence in Los Angeles, was the death of 14-year-old Cheryl Miller in the Harbor Gateway. However, the police, with their great police work, have been able to capture suspects and are moving forward with convictions on that one. But Arturo Ponce Mercado, a 34-year-old, was also brutally gunned down in the Harbor Gateway area, actually, a few days before Cheryl was killed. And he was standing in his driveway in the 1500 block of 205th Street in the Harbor Gateway, and was gunned down. And many of the community members felt like this was also a racially motivated murder. However, there's no evidence since been, or witnesses that have come forth to verify that. But this was also a senseless murder. And the racial tension in that area cried out that we put as much effort, and we also offer a reward for the killing of Arturo, as the attention that we placed on the killing of Cheryl. Any murder, any senseless cowardly act that results in a murder, an innocent person should draw all of our attentions and demand that we all do whatever we can to end that violence. So we're offering today a $50,000 reward that we hope will compel witnesses to come forward. Everyone believes someone saw what happened. They do know what happened, they did see something. So we're asking that the community members come forward, provide evidence to LAPD, so we can also solve this terrible crime. Because until we kind of move past the terrible murders of Cheryl and Arturo, long-term healing and long-term solutions for this community, I don't believe will really be able to gel. So we're hoping that this can be solved, so that we can bring a little peace, a little closure, to Arturo's family, as well as what we're doing to heal the death of Cheryl Green. We're meeting in the Harbor Gateway area every two weeks with community members. I'm meeting with them in that 186th Street school to do the same things that we did in Watts a year ago, to try to figure out what's the root cause of the violence. We've had law enforcement come down in the Harbor Gateway area, which is welcome, but we know that, long term, we're going to have to deal with this racial tension, we're going to have to deal with keeping kids out of gangs in the first place. But I ask that you'll support this, and we're asking the community, if they know of anything, they can call anonymously, they can call Sergeant Rosemary Piazza at 310-522-2040. That's 310-522-2040. Colleagues, I hope you'll support me in offering this $50,000 reward to try to solve this problem, and finally, begin to heal the Harbor Gateway area of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 32 calls special for cards from the public.
Yes, Miriam Fogler, excuse me, this is the item. Ms. Fogler? Not, Zuma-Dog.
What number is this?
This is item number 32.
Again, I'll just be brief. I know there's been a lot of controversy over the trash collection fees for 1,000 new cops. Well, I'd like to say, I think, the first little teensy weensy trickle of money, $20,000 for some cops for CD14, for the bikes and foot patrol, $20,000 bucks in overtime, that even enough for one cop, but it's the start, y'all. Let's have some more of these 1,000 cops with the trash collection fees, and thank you for the first little trickle, y'all. It's going to make Doug McIntyre so happy and much less hateful, I'm sure. Now, let's have avalanche of money for these cops, y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Fogler.
Yes, thank you. I'm not trying to take more time than I have to, because it's been a long morning. Thank you for all the time you gave us, to the public, for public comment. I'm here because I really love our policemen, their policewomen in uniform. They really need the support, and you guys can, you know, if you can give up some of your salaries, if you get $20,000 a year, give that back to our law enforcement, to our fire department, to these, you know, these guys are putting their lives on the line. So I don't want to lose the young people coming up. I met a couple of them that wanted to come into the academy. I didn't recommend them, they already want to try to join. So I encourage them to go down and apply for being a police officer. So let's give them incentives, let's see, get the officers to want to be here, okay? Let's make this a friendly, happy, and fun place to live in Los Angeles, okay? Thank you very much. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, you, too. Mr. Zein.
I'd just like to respond on that police recruitment efforts. We've done a number of incentives, we've got additional incentives coming forward for the recruitment. There's signing bonuses, there's relocation bonuses, there's a number of bonuses, military buyback, there's a lot of incentives that we're offering for people to join the Los Angeles Police Department, and this city has come forward, along with the mayor, to recruit anyone interested. We encourage you to come forward, not only the full-time officers, but the reserve officers. Make sure that we put that message out. We're openly hiring police officers. And today, also, let's congratulate those 40-plus officers who are graduating the academy today. They'll be hitting the streets tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 33 calls special by Councilmember Hahn.
Yes, Ms. Hahn.
Colleagues, I wanted to call this special because this is a transfer of about $219,000 from Prop 12 money, from MTA Call for Bids grant money, and it's to build an environmentally sensitive parking lot. And it's to build a parking lot by the White Point Nature Preserve in San Pedro. This is 102 acres of open space, probably the last 100 acres of open space anywhere that has been dedicated as a nature preserve. But we obviously want people to come look at that and walk through it, there's hiking trails. And what this does is build an environmentally sensitive parking lot, not straight concrete, but materials that will allow, permeable, which will allow the water to seep through it. And it's really to encourage the school buses to come and bring kids from all over the city to see this incredible nature preserve again, which is, there's very few of those left in Los Angeles. So I just wanted to make a point of this, and give a shout-out to all those who worked so hard over the years to preserve this open space, and to know that today, we're transferring the dollars that will build this environmentally sensitive parking lot, and hopefully, kids from all over Los Angeles will be able to come, and those buses will be able to park sensitively. And sensitive buses, and enjoy this preserve. So I appreciate your vote on this.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to wait for the vote to finish, so I can move something forthwith.
Okay, what would you like to move forthwith?
Item 34, please.
Item 34, we'll move forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
And next item, Madam President, is item 35, and that was called Special Four Cards from the Public.
Yes, Candido Mares, followed by Zuma-Dog, followed by Miriam Fogler.
Thank you, Madam President. I've had the honor for, since 1988, to be a member of the Citizens Unit for Participation on Housing and Urban Development. That's the Cup Committee, that's the group that is involved with the Consolidated Plan. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about community development block grant dollars. We want to increase the cap from 15% to 25%. In 1992, when we had the riots, we increased that amount of money. What did that do? That helped stimulate the economy, it helped revitalize our neighborhoods. That happened after the earthquake. So for us to increase that cap to 25% is essential. This year, we'll be spending about $116 million, which means about, I believe, $16 million will be, excuse me, $114 million will be allocated for CBG funds, $16 million for public services. If we were to increase that number, it would go to 25 million. Can you imagine what we could do with that money? That would affect our LA Best Program, that would affect our children, our, excuse me, homeless program, our gang prevention programs. We need that increase. So congratulations, I hope we can make that happen, and again, this is a great effort on the part of the city council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mares. Zuma-Dog.
Yes, I hope Councilmember Weiss can watch us on the broadcast. He didn't listen to a thing. Candido Myers said he was just too busy distracting Wendy Gruel. But this is money we need, once again, to echo what Candy said, when you got Zuma-Dog and Candy on the same side of the issue, it's time to pay attention, y'all, because even though we're friends, we usually differ politically. But we need this money, we need to increase some of the money that will go to, let's see, I wanted to read off some of these things, but he flipped the pages, y'all. Okay, human service, gang prevention programs, school partnership programs, homeless programs. This is where the mayor wants 10% more money to go to some of these things here, and it's been a long day. My hash brownie wore off, my concentration in ADD's kicked in, so let's just have a nice day, and I'll be stopping by that Prop 215 clinic in someone's district. They got a strip club and pizza parlor and a marijuana dispensary. I'll be there all afternoon, thank you.
Miriam Fogler.
Yes, I'm going to make this brief and very precise. I don't want it permanent 25, I want it to go up as we need, based on need. I think it needs very thorough study here, so that we can get the money that we need for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for the speakers, when, and after the 1992 civil disturbance, we were able to get federal legislation that allowed us to go up to 25% nationally. It is not to that number, and it was a way in which we were able to provide services to a number of people. We were able to keep that 25% for many, many years, and it was just a few years ago that Congress did not extend that 25%. This is an effort in which to keep that. There were some cities that were grandfathered in when they changed it, but the money we get from community development block grant is limited at this time, and we hope to change that. So thank you very much to those that were here. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item's been approved, and we're asking it to go forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn, this is a corrective request for March 30th, to be excused the entire meeting, that meets council policy.
She will be excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Tuesday, April 10th, for personal business, and Wednesday, April 25th, for city business, to leave at 11:30. Those both meet council policy.
He will be excused.
And Councilmember Ruiz has turned in a request to be excused from today's meeting, and that meets council policy.
Thank you, he'll be excused.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have announcements? Mr. LeBonde?
Very special announcements. I want to thank your office, all of you under the direction of Mayor Antonio Villarreal Grossa, and our Public Works President, Cynthia Ruiz. Tomorrow, we kick off the Great American Cleanup Campaign. It's a national kickoff of the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful program of Keep America Beautiful. It's at City Hall steps with a kickoff at 8:00 AM, and we go out in various projects throughout the district. Invite you all to come, and if you're listening to this, just come to City Hall tomorrow at 9 o'clock, and volunteer to help keep Los Angeles beautiful. Also, I'd like to say, following day, on Sunday, will be the Great Los Angeles Marathon, which originates in the San Fernando Valley, right here at the Universal Studios. A run down Coinga Pass, through Hollywood, through the Hancock Park area, Koreatown area, through the southern part of the city by the Great Exposition Park, through the shadow of the Coliseum, down to south-central area of Central Avenue, and back Jefferson, around through the garment district, over the great Boyle Avenue, to the Sixth Street Bridge, back into town, 26.2 miles. It's a great event. It's a point-to-point event. We invite everybody to come, and for $3 pass, you can ride the red line all day and see it. So see the Los Angeles Marathon, and wish everybody well in that event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to announce to the public that the Budget and Finance Committee will be holding its third of four meetings in the public. Will be in the valley at Van Nuys City Hall, 6:00 PM, Monday, March 5th. We hope the public comes out and discusses their priorities for the '07-'08 budget. Also, on Saturday, March 3rd, at 11:30, there'll be a dedication in the 8th District at the Van Nuys Recre, I'm sorry, Van Ness Recreation Center at 5722 Second Avenue, which will dedicate a new gymnasium and name it in honor of Johnny L. Cochran. Cochran's family will be there, the mayor will be there, and many of the 8th District residents.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Zein.
Thank you. I'd like to offer congratulations to Armand Arabian, who's going to be receiving his dinner award tonight for the Fernando Award for Retired California State Court Justice, Armand Arabian. Also, tomorrow, Wollon Hill Sunrise Little League, a lot of the little leagues are kicking off their season. We want to offer them our congratulations and good sportsmanship. And also, there is a parade, if I'm not mistaken, on Sunday. Saturday, there's a parade on Saturday on Hollywood, and that is going to be Hollywood next to Gromans Chinese, Chinese New Year Parade in Hollywood. And also, Purim Festival this Sunday at many of the temples in the San Fernando Valley. So we want to wish all of the folks a happy Purim.
You're being too shy. You'll be giving the keynote address on Sunday evening for the Guangzhou Los Angeles Sister City Program. Mr. Zein has visited Guangzhou, a year after I led the way to make sure, to warn them about Mr. Zein. And they all loved Mr. Zein and look forward to seeing you for that wonderful banquet.
I left my son over there, and I wish he'd come home. So it's going to be an exciting weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. Do we have adjourning motions today? Yes, we do. If we could ask everyone to please rise.
Thank you, colleagues. Let's adjourn today in memory of Van Barberi, who was a longtime, well, was a San Pedro native, and he just passed away recently. He was 91 years old. Van was the son of immigrants from Ischia, Italy, one of our most recent sister cities, and later attended San Pedro High School. During World War II, he worked at Bethlehem Steel and Shipbuilding on Terminal Island, where he helped to build the first U.S. Navy destroyer on the West Coast, the USS Kendrick. After World War II, he joined the huge San Pedro fishing fleet as radio operator and deck crewman, and in 1954, Van joined ILW Local 63 as a marine clerk. He was elected to the executive board several times, and he retired from ILW as a proud member of Local 63 and chief clerk at APL, birth 93 in 1978. Van is survived by his loving wife of almost 69 years, Eva, and their four sons and their families. Van Junior, Dennis, Anthony, and John, as well as five grandchildren. He's also survived by his half-sister, Antoinette, and his nephews and their families. A funeral mass will be offered on March 3rd at 10:30 AM at Mary Star of the Sea Church, followed by a private internment at Green Hills Memorial Park.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any adjourning motions? Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President.